So I'm Deanna Patrilli. I've worked with Lords for the last 12 years. And so in our local area, and then I've been working with this team since inception in 2018. So we will, we have a PowerPoint.
Permission to share screen? Stephanie is working on that for us.
Yeah, you should. I requested to make you a co-host, which should allow you to do that. Okay.
Can you guys see it?
We can.
Yep.
Okay. Okay. There we go.
So historically, officers have very few options awarded to them, especially when experiencing individuals experiencing a behavioral health emergency, and that be chronic mental illness or severe substance use disorder. And incarceration was typically the only option that they had. And so what we found to be true is that jails, despite having mental health services or mental health staff, they're not designed to be therapeutic environments. And so a lot of times when somebody experienced psychosis, suicidal ideation, homicidal ideation, whatever that condition may be, putting them in jail, it's not designed like a psych hospital or a secure detox facility to help resolve that immediate crisis, right? And so in the past, people have decompensated to the point of passing away. And so what happened with those, Washington State actually was sued because Eastern State Hospital, Western State Hospital were not able to meet the requirements of them to get competency and restoration orders done. And so it happened more on the west side than it did the east side, but it still happened here where patients were getting to the point where they were decompensating to death or to the point where they were non-restorable. And so that resulted in a lot of fine dollars. And so what they did with those fine dollars is they decided to put those back into the system and bolster up the mental health system so that people were either identified who had been incarcerated or programs like ours to get ahead of that on the front end. And so the Seattle Foundation in partnership with Disability Rights of Washington put that out into three phases. The first two phases were to bolster jail rosters and have jail mental health screeners who could identify people who were arrested primarily due to symptoms of their substance use disorder or their chronic mental illness, and to get them on a furlough order or get them out of jail on a PR order and get them divert to a more appropriate service. So luckily here, both in Franklin and Benton County, we do have jail mental health staff already in there. And so we weren't qualified or to do the first two phases because we already had that. What we did have was in the third phase where we wanted to get ahead of that. And so that was to develop a mobile outreach team. And so with that Phase 3 dollars, we, in partnership with the 10 other law enforcement entities of Benton and Franklin County, put together a mobile outreach team that would embed in law enforcement to help assess in real time what was going on and co-embed. And so you'll hear a lot of models being kicked around lately of having a team of social workers or having teams that dispatch separately from law enforcement. Our model is a true co-responder model, meaning that we are riding along with law enforcement. And so that's where they start their shift, that's where we end our shift, and we're seeing things in real time that way. So this first intercept, and we can talk about as this progresses outside of the grant, but we still have grant requirements because this whole program is funded grants. So the target population for this is offenders who have had a history of both severe substance use disorder or chronic mental illness with a long rap sheet of criminal history. And so our job, at least to start this program, was to identify those people and prevent them from getting arrested in the first place. Send them to a more appropriate service that could take care of the issue on why they committed the crime in the first place. In our program, even though we are embedded in Pasco, Richland, and Kennewick Police Departments, we do serve the surrounding areas as requested. So anybody in Benton Franklin County from Prosser to Connel, and anybody in the county lines can request to come out, and we have responded to those as well. These individuals perform daily write-alongs, and they will respond, like we said again. And historically, this has been a big contention before with crisis services and with law enforcement. You get an officer who is seeing somebody experiencing behavioral health emergency, they take them into temporary custody, bring them to an emergency department for further evaluation. They get some time to sober up, they get some food in them, get some water in them. And by the time that the crisis responder is able to respond to that, they have a completely different presentation to what the officer saw, right?
And so, and I can speak to this firsthand, right? So I've been doing this since 2018 and riding with the officers. For us, as also, it's called designated crisis responders. So we are the only people in the state who can also evaluate people for involuntary hospitalization if they need it. And so by responding right there in the field, the officers and the DCR present are able to evaluate on scene, seeing things firsthand in their environment rather than a sobering or secure environment such as the hospital where it changes the circumstance. Officers are no longer forced to try and relay clinical information that isn't their wheelhouse or really understand or have the terminology for. And so we're able to help them sort through all of that. And then also working together, obviously, the officer is able to gain greater knowledge and understanding of how to interact with the individuals and/or relay information back to behavioral health clinicians that may not always be there with them or have other conversations. But I do want to point out that the officers that we have worked with have been amazing in their ability to de-escalate. They have been able to really show us different tricks in the field of how to interact with individuals to keep things and secure safe scenes.
Well, we were able to know, like Deanna said, right away that this was beneficial for both sides. This was beneficial for the mental health system, this was beneficial for law enforcement, but most importantly, it was beneficial for the community members and the clients that we serve. In real time, like Dee said, we're able to stabilize the immediate crisis with law enforcement present. We're able to make those referrals, do that assessment, de-escalate the situation, but also it cuts down that time. We just did the evaluation in the field. We've already triaged the situation on where the person's going. We have secure transport right then and there. We don't have to wait for an ambulance because police qualifies that secure transport. And we can help with the unnecessary medical clearance because if we deem medical clearance not necessary in this situation, we don't have to then take them and get an ED bill and on top of all the other waiting times. And so this right away streamlined everything for all parties involved. Clients, the community, police, crisis system, everybody, this really helped to not put the cog in the wheel there. So for bringing it up to speed, we started this program in 2018. And so that went for an 18-month period, and we were awarded another 18 months, which is coming to a close here in June of 2020. Due to the program's success and meeting all the goals of this program, we were able to qualify for an additional year of funding, which will occur from June 2021 to June 2022. With that, we are moving from 12 FTEs to 10 FTEs. That decision was, we did have bachelor-level clinicians with this program. It became extremely apparent right away that having the designated crisis responders who have the ability to perform detentions under RCW 7105 for adults and RCW 7134 for youth and adolescents, we didn't need crisis system in general. We could just bypass that and do the detentions right then and there. And so we have now converted all of those positions to designated crisis responders. So most likely, there will be two in Kennewick, two in Richland, two in Pasco, and we are proposing to have one in West Richland, of course, with permission and blessing. And we also have three peer specialists. It's kind of the unksung hero of this program. And so as some of you know, peer specialist positions, the definition of that is anybody who can identify with living with a chronic mental disorder or a severe substance use disorder, or has a direct family member they've cared for with that. And so these individuals are able to help people not fall through the cracks. Where Deanna and her team are riding along with law enforcement, performing those assessments and on to the next, these individuals then come out and either one, if detention wasn't warranted, we can come up with some ongoing care for this person, do some temporary case management till services or benefits, clothing vouchers, whatever is put into place to help that person. But if we do place them, we don't have to worry about them falling through the cracks and being in the discharge process. Those individuals step up and go to rounds, help with the discharge planning, and they provide a valuable service that doesn't get enough credit, but they will also be a part of that. So we will have 10 full FTEs, seven designated crisis responders, three peer specialists for this next grant term. The grant goals, the whole purpose of this is to divert unnecessary arrests. If we can prevent somebody from getting into the mental health system, or not mental health system, but criminal justice system and staying in there, and when we can divert to the mental health system that's more equipped to handle their issues, we will do that. We also wanted to reduce those demand for competency services. And so an individual is, we can just say a moose's prime, for example, if somebody commits a disorderly conduct, if you or I did that and had a bad night and got put in jail for actions that we did, we could make bail and get out the next day. These individuals' competency has been raised, so that option isn't awarded to them where they're sitting in jail for 30 days, sometimes longer, on something that they didn't need to stay in there for that long, just to prove that maybe they didn't have competency at the time. So we've helped release that burden on both the criminal justice system and the legal system. But our whole goal of this is to get ahead of that. It didn't make any sense to have people bolster jail when they're already in jail, right? And so our whole program is to prevent incarceration from occurring in the first place. Another grant goal of ours was to increase the amount of CIT trained officers that we had, and our goal was 25%. We did that by 50%, and we've actually increased the 40-hour trainings to two a year. Deanna is the chairperson for that organization, and she's taken a big role in developing that program or making it even bigger than what it was.
So by having MHPs within patrol, we really learned a lot of ways to interpret information so it makes sense for law enforcement. So it has actually made the CIT class a lot more productive in the way they can understand what we're trying to relate to them. We've learned how to speak the same languages and why certain information is important and relevant to them, and so it sinks in a little bit further. We've also been able to provide other trainings for our local law enforcement agencies upon request, depending on any kind of mental health topic, and it's been really productive. I know that Captain Gregor had some things to add to that section.
Yeah, so I just wanted to mention that we have maintained 100% of that 40-hour crisis intervention training attendance for a lot of years, I think ever since it started. So I just wanted to kind of throw that in there to let the council know that we maintain 100% of our team doing that, so that's how important it is.
Yeah, we definitely, when we open up the class for registration, we make sure we talk to all of our local agencies first to make sure they get their officers in as needed. And we're complying with all the state regulations for each agency for them as well.
And so one of the other benefits of this program, besides the quality and from a humanistic standpoint, it provides is the cost savings. And so if we are getting ahead of this and directing that to a more Medicaid reimbursable or private insurance style of reimbursement for the service they're providing, the cities are not on the hook for the daily bed rate that the jail is going to charge. We're also cutting down on officer overtime by streamlining process where officers aren't taken up and not doing their duties in the streets, where they're sitting in the ED waiting for somebody to arrive from crisis to evaluate them. And so it takes away quite a bit of costs that aren't really transportation costs, so on and so on, that we have other funds that could take care of that. If you roll somebody into benefits, a lot of those services are serviceable or Medicaid reimbursement from there. We've determined that once the grant is over in funding, that we are looking about $100K would get a full-time DCR for whoever or whatever that funding source is to pay for that. And that comes with equipment, laptop, vest, all the bells and whistles that they need, plus the salary and benefits of that. So program benefits. Like Deanna touched on, this has bridged both worlds. We found out early on that we spoke two different languages. What a shocker, right? We spoke acronyms that they use, similar acronyms, but they meant different things. Or our definition of voluntary, where what we have to go off the strict definition of voluntary is the person cognitively able to understand what they're agreeing to and all the ramifications that come with that for a police officer. Voluntary means they got into my police car, right, and went with me. So different terminology, different ways of going about things. We're able to speak the same language now and have bridged that world.
And so what that has done for us is, I mean, DCRs and officers would get into arguments about what was voluntary and not voluntary. But now because we have both perspectives, we're able to educate other DCRs here at the local crisis who respond a little bit differently. And we're also able to educate to officers saying, okay, so when you guys are having this conversation, even though it's the same word, it means different things. So by being able to communicate on a much better level, it makes better outcomes for the individual we're working with. And again, it just increases the continual conversation between law enforcement and mental health.
And with those interactions occurring with law enforcement and with the mental health professionals in real time, it drastically reduces those wait times. Our consumers of services, our community members are there, served there right in real time. We're not having to transport and wait different things. Like we talked about, we can streamline the process of the evaluations already occurred in the field. The triage has already taken place in the field. We just need to get that person now to the psych hospital or to a detox facility, and the job is done. So that also reduces the wait time for EDs and other in the crisis system. We can safety plan on scene. And so if the person is experiencing behavioral health emergency, but it's not warranting to the level of involuntary detention or arrest, we can safety plan, call the people to get a loved one or a family member or have some other services wrapped around them so they're not coming back up on the radar again that night or that week, and we can do a decent job of safety planning with all parties involved. This is also a jail diversion option. And so yes, somebody can make the decision, being an officer, to arrest somebody, but that can be a conversation now about the options. And so if the officer feels strongly about it, we don't intervene and we don't speak up in that. Some crimes do deserve to go to jail, but sometimes there may be another option, and those can be discussed right then in real time with all parties involved. And we also divert misuse of 911 calls. We can help for the chronic callers or the people that call a lot of times, we can easily identify and get a peer support out to discuss with that person or get some services wrapped around so they're not tying up those lines. And it's a way better for utilizing mental health, law enforcement, and other first responder services more efficiently. This also applies to fire EMS, anybody else that may be going out and dealing with some emergencies in the community. So some stats as of March 2021. Since program inception, we have seen 1,969 unduplicated community members with 5,800 being total contacts. And so as you know, similar to the recidivism rate, sometimes you see the same people over and over again. And we've experienced that as well. And sometimes it will take the same person that we've seen three times before we can get a decent amount of orders around or safety planning, anything like that. We have done 1,958 peer support contacts. And that prior charges, that was grant-specific. We had to prove to the grant source that we were targeting people who have a long history of recidivism, a long history of psychiatric hospitalization, those type of issues. And so the total charges that we've come into contact with is 9,984 past charges, with the average individual having five charges of each contact we come into with. So we've also done 116 ITA detentions, and those are what we're talking about for the RCWs, either to a secure detox facility or a psychiatric hospital. And then the breakdown from there is where those contacts have taken place. You may wonder, even though your city is very nice, West Richland is, the 21 is not reflective of how many behavioral health emergencies you've had in the city. That's just how many times we were able to get out there and respond on scene in comparison to the other spots that we were at.
And that's based on officer requests. So as you can imagine, the officers are actually directly requesting us to come out and help them. We are not stationed in their department, and so they are able to identify all of those times, hey, we could really use an MHP in this circumstance. And then we make efforts from either Kennewick, Richland, or Pasco, whichever MHP is free and available will come out and assist those officers as they need.
And what we found out early on, Deanna touched on this earlier, is that majority of the officers are great at de-escalation. They don't need help with verbal de-escalation. What they need is navigating a system that they're unfamiliar with and getting somebody from point A to point B in a decent amount of time. And the system, as far as from a behavioral health standpoint, is difficult for us to navigate. I can't imagine an officer on the field trying to navigate it on the fly. And so having us there helps streamline that entire process. So that brings us to any questions, comments, or concerns that you may have?
Thank you. That was a great presentation. Thomas, I'll go ahead and Captain Gregor, excuse me, I'll let you go ahead and take questions and roll it on. Councilman Bloom has his hand up, Captain Gregor. Okay?
Okay, I guess the question I have, or I have several, but first off, the comment was whether you could stabilize in the field. Does that include administering medication in the field or just simply the security, the safety plan of finding someone to care for the individual?
Yeah, good question. No involuntary or voluntary medication would be administered in this program. If that was a situation that was needed, we probably would utilize the emergency department. But stabilization would be stabilizing the scene for all parties involved. And so safety-wise, but also stabilizing the immediate crisis, whether that would be some psychosis, a manic episode, depression, suicide ideation, whatever the behavioral presenting issue was, that's what we'd be looking to stabilize.
Okay. Then you said that you're equipped to handle. And I guess the question I have is the lack of resources at our state hospitals. I mean, is that an overstatement? I mean, there are some people that require commitment, and I don't think there's room.
I'm sorry, so what was the question about the state hospitals then? So is there?
You said that you're equipped to handle, but what I understand is the state hospital system is overwhelmed at this time.
Yeah, the state hospital has converted to a forensic unit. So they don't do involuntary civil commitments at that initial 120 hours that we would be detaining for. So what Eastern and Western State are now is if somebody's already in the criminal justice system, they've already been incarcerated, they are doing the 1077 competency and restoration orders to determine whether that person is competent to understand court proceedings. The only other involvement from the state hospitals is if we've had somebody who has been initially committed on that initial detention. They've made it to the 14-day hearing. They've also been now put on a 180-day or 90-day LRA, and then they would be transferred to the state hospital. So all of the stuff we are talking about is utilizing either a crisis triage facility, an ENT facility, a psychiatric hospital, a secure detox facility, social detox facility. We utilize all of those facilities, equipped to handle those facilities throughout Washington. But the state hospital, there isn't a direct line from us to them.
Okay, so this would reduce some of the burden on the state hospital then?
Correct.
Yeah, when we evaluate in the field, we can identify whether or not someone needs to go into a further level of system. So we always evaluate first lesser restrictive alternative, which means, are they safe staying at home? Is there something we can put in place to safeguard the situation to avoid further, you know, further illness getting worse or ending up in jail? And so that's always the first step. And so that's when we say, you know, we're equipped to handle some of these other circumstances, then we further evaluate for placement.
Well, the third item I had, and third and last, you recognize the multiple offender issue. Would that still be tracked? I mean, you know, if the arrest is not made, will that individual be, that the issues come up three, four, five, six? Is that going to be available to the officer in the field?
Well, as far as crimes go, or if they decide to do a hold on somebody, we will be documenting everything on our side still. So there's always documentation. And the system that we have today with iLeads, if I look up your name, I could see all your contacts and what you've been involved in. So that's the law enforcement side of the house, but I'll let Deanna kind of explain from their side.
Yeah, we definitely track the individuals we come into contact with. And some of the other statistics we track are, a lot of people ask questions about the diversions. And it's difficult to sometimes track the possible jail diversions that would happen in the future, right? So we have multiple contacts with an individual. We see that maybe they might have been arrested for a trespass. But by having MHPs in the field, we can see that maybe they're not thinking clearly, and they're going to go back to that location, and they do meet criteria for placement. Then we will intervene at that point prior to a crime even being committed. So those numbers are a little bit more hypothetical to track, but we are working on finding ways to prove that those things are occurring.
Okay, thank you.
Are you sir?
Captain Gregor, can you see hands up or not?
It looks like Kate Moran.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Captain. And also thank both of you, Deanna and Cameron, for being here. I'm wondering first, you said that we are co-responders and that it's not an independent response. I was just wondering if you could just, a basic explanation of why you are co-responders and not independent responders?
Yeah, and so the safety of all parties involved is our most priority. And even though we are responding with officers, we're able to secure the scene. So from a clinician's standpoint, that takes a huge, at least for some people's mind, the safety is on the, you know, their most utmost priority. If the scene is secured by law enforcement, they feel comfortable now on scene to do an assessment without their safety being called into question. And so it has that benefit there. Having the co-responder model is more beneficial in the eyes where we can game plan the situation on our way. So for example, if I'm in the car with law enforcement and I already know that there's no beds available here or the ED has jam-packed here, we're having that discussion on our ride over to the actual scene. And so we can help game plan prior, bring up history, talk about this person's history. Hey, they can get violent if we go in this area. You know, they have a severe substance use disorder here. This person is known to have firearms. These are all things that we can game plan with all parties involved before we even get there. And so if you did not have a co-responder model, we would not have any of that information. And we wouldn't have the access, like Captain Gregor said, with iLeads. Same with our crisis system, we would be separate. We would only have what we had, and we wouldn't have the information that they would have. And so they would put us at a disadvantage that way. If the officer is maybe potentially, just by being in uniform, and the person feels a certain way about law enforcement, as long as the scene's secured, we can then still approach that person separate. We are not in police attire. We are in safety vests that mark and show mental health, not the same color as law enforcement. So we're easily identifiable as not being police officers. So whether, and we've had it vice versa. We've had the part where the person had a bad experience with clinicians in the past and does not want to speak to a clinician, and they'd rather speak with law enforcement and vice versa. And so the co-responder model has a lot of benefits to it to where if we didn't do it, we would be operating under the old crisis model, which still exists for a, we can still go out to the community as crisis. And so for those calls that don't have an element of criminal activity or an element of safety, that is still appropriate for crisis to go out. And so we still have that benefit already.
And I can speak too. There's been multiple occasions on scene where if I didn't have my law enforcement partners there with me, circumstances could have gone very differently. And that's just been in the last, you know, since 2018. And that goes for every department we've worked with. So there's multiple benefits to having a co-responder while also having the independent crisis services be able to handle maybe some of those lesser volume calls that would get redirected to them anyways.
Okay, thank you. And then I was also wondering for the, pardon the dog in the background. So then it would be, though, separate with the peer specialist? Because the DCRs are who you're referring to, where it's going to be with the officer. But the peer specialist would just be on their own unless they felt a safety need to have an officer there?
Correct, yeah. And so, and when we talked about stabilizing that scene, we would never send a peer support out without the scene being stable. And so the scene, and it's usually some very specific follow-up services, like, hey, we identified somebody. The original call was for A, B, and C. It didn't warrant arrest, it also didn't warrant placement, but we still think the person needs some help. They should probably get Medicaid attached, they should probably get some referrals. They can get some food assistance, some clothes. So the peers would be coming out after the scene's been stabilized and doing very specific duties. Same with when placement is obtained. They're doing very specific, making sure the person's got appointments and an outpatient referral already made. And so there, we try to keep them as safe as possible. There's always an element of danger that could happen, but the scene is secure before the peer specialists come out.
Okay, excellent, thank you. And I definitely want to commend Captain Gregor and the chief and all of the crew for maintaining that 100% for the 40-hour CIT, definitely. We know that West Richland Police Department is one of the most well-trained police departments in the state of Washington, if not even beyond that. So thank you for that. And the fact that this is cost-effective, it's people-focused, and it's a humane response. I really like this. I am wondering, when it comes to the FTE, are we specifically saying that the one FTE for West Richland is going to be, and please let me know if this is in the weeds, if that is going to be a person that's just going to be paid for on call, if it's going to be as needed, or if it's just going to be a flat rate of, they're out here, this is how much they're making, whether they're on call or in response?
Yeah, that would be a full-time FTE with a co-responder embedded into West Richland. Yeah, that would be a full time F T E with a co responder embedded into West Richland. And so they would show up at West Richland Police Department, they would get into a police car and ride along with them. Uh and the the length of their shift would be determined based on the amount of calls that West Richland is receiving, so peak call hour. So we'd want to match somebody uh with the times that's going to be relevant to West Richland's call volume, that's going to get the most out of the time.
Okay, and that would be like a forty hour week, I'm assuming, but it would just be based off of that time when the most calls normally happen?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, perfect, thank you so much. I really appreciate what you're doing and I appreciate what our police department is doing in partnering with you.
Mayor, the next hand I see is Gail Brown's.
Yes, sir.
Hi, I I I think this is great, I I think it'd be really good for West Richland. Um but I Bloom, Mr. Bloom was talking about the what um it what the community has for your backup. Do you guys still run the PAC and the homeless outreach and and so forth?
Yeah, we still have a PAC program, uh there is a path which is the homeless outreach and getting them connected, we still have that. Uh we we still have all of our traditional services and we do work in tandem with them. The only time uh with the swing shift and integrated weekend when those aren't available, we'd be looking to contact their on call or wait till Monday morning. But uh we can work in tandem with the existing programs as well.
And how many local beds do we have?
So we have a crisis triage facility here, which is called Transitions, and that's a sick bed. That's for lower acuity and primarily voluntary, they can take pensions, they can take up to four of those. Uh so there are sixteen beds for that, and then we have our psych hospital, which is twenty up to twenty two. And so those always weigh depending on acuity, uh line of sights, the different kind of issues that they may have there. Uh but yes, we have those sixteen beds for less acute and twenty two for high acuity.
And then you were talking about the jail diversion, um do you have that for both adults and juveniles or just?
It could be, we we haven't got a chance to get with prosecutors and get a juvie one fully uh planned out. But the the skeleton of the adult one is there. So the uh whole parameters of crimes that were disqualifying or crimes that would qualify are already intact. We just have to get with prosecutors to uh COVID kind of put a damper on that. That was in the process along with expanding some of the jail diversion options for adults. Uh and it's been extremely hard to get all uh prosecutors and defense attorneys and everybody at the same table to finalize that, but it it's been in the works.
That's unfortunate because I I was part of the diversion years ago and it kind of fell apart. And and I think that's really important to for some of those kids not to get a big record right off the get go, it kind of follows them. Well, I think it's great, I I'm looking forward to, one last question though, uh do we, have we got open to detox that? We don't have a detox there yet, do we?
No, there there is no social detox, which is probably the most needed one, uh and there is no medical detox or security tox. And so any one of those three uh would be beneficial, but we we don't have any of them.
Okay.
Thank you. Mayor, the next hand I see is John Smart.
Yes, sir. Oh yes, thank you, um great presentation, uh I have a question, a lot of my questions already been asked, so. Thanks for other council members for being on on the ball there. Like, so uh reporting on individuals that have been detained, is this a public record? And how is that accessible, if at all, by by others? So if you have to detain somebody?
Yeah, so if we detain somebody, the elements of the detention itself are protected under HIPAA. Now, what can be viewed is the court hearings because those are open to public. And so if somebody goes to the hundred and twenty hour court hearing. Anybody from the community can attend those and those are open, but the rest of the information is protected by HIPAA. So very specific, uh whether that's their past history, their current diagnosis, any of the elements of that. Uh that part is not, so civil law versus criminal law, criminal, you can usually get a hold of a lot of that. A lot of the civil law stuff that we operate under is still protected under HIPAA.
So how um have you uh? How how long would a person be detained before there was a court hearing? Is this like similar to us uh an arrest or is this under fall under different rules and guidelines?
Good question, so yes, it is different than an arrest. And so uh as of January twenty twenty one, the law changed, so the law has changed fairly recently. It was three days that you uh could detain, not counting weekends or holidays, it is now five days. Uh so there are some pros and cons to that though, and so now it is a hundred and twenty hours that we can initially detain somebody for. So the the pros to that is that people have longer time to stabilize in the psych hospital, they can get some meds and then get better discharge plans, stuff like that. The con of that is that we already had a bed shortage now and your people are staying longer, it's harder to get some people in, so double edged sword there. Uh but after that five days, and these five days don't count weekends or holidays, so if somebody goes in on Friday night. Saturday, Sunday don't count, Monday is a holiday, Monday doesn't count, and then your clock doesn't start till Tuesday. So at the end of that five days, they will have a court hearing scheduled. Uh that person who is detained has the option to stipulate, meaning that they can say, sure, I agree, I want to transition to voluntary and I'd be willing to. Go with what the psychiatrist tells me to do or no, I contest and I don't want to be here and I would like the court hearing. If they do contest, then they uh can either utilize their own attorney or one will be assigned to them. And they will meet with that attorney as well, and then uh the prosecutor, defense. And just like that's when it goes to more of a uh a traditional court setting where the judge is there. Uh all parties either testifying for or against the detention would take place. And then the judge makes the decision after that whether the person is committed for an additional fourteen days.
Okay, and then how does that compare, maybe it's a question for uh. Officer Grego, uh you know, how does that compare with a with a standard arrest? What what's a person's time in detention before they go to a hearing?
Well, seventy two hour holds is what we have for felonies, uh misdemeanors uh can be set on bail like the next day by the judge. Because those are obviously misdemeanor, gross misdemeanor charges, so uh maximum we have is seventy two hour holds for felony. Before they before they, you know, come before a judge.
Okay. And then um and my other question, which maybe is slightly related to this. Is. Find it here. You mentioned the terms, the term detained prior to a crime being committed. I heard these words from you, so how how is that decision made and? Maybe you can expand on that a little bit.
Sure, so I think Captain Grego could do it from a better from a law enforcement stand, but what I mean by that is uh putting them into protective custody. If they're uh showing signs of any alarm or any behavioral health emergency in order to get that person assessed. Uh the officers have the ability to put somebody into temporary protective custody for that evaluation.
Yeah, so if they're become, sorry, go ahead. If they're if they're going to harm themselves or somebody else, um obviously that and we need to take them into protective custody. Because uh you know, they are in crisis, then absolutely we have that right to detain them.
And is there a um a written standard or a document that provides guidelines on what you're allowed to consider? Um a a necessity, a a situation with a necessity for protective custody or detained before a crime is committed?
Not not necessarily a form, what we do is I document my report, the reason why I took them into protective custody. Um and that would be obviously an afterthought to the reason why I did what I did. But then working with the mental health professionals, taking the next step, and this is why I'm doing what I'm doing. And um that information may lead, you know, a D C R to say, I'll follow up, take this a little bit further from here then, you know, and get them help.
And and the word detained might be something also, that's one of those words that means two different things depending on which world you're in, right? So for me, a detention means hospitalization, psychiatric placement. Detainment for law enforcement could mean an arrest and going to jail. But depending on how we have that conversation is how we detect which one we're doing for what, when and where.
Well, you know what, I'm going to be bold here and express an opinion. And uh and it's just for the good of the public uh consumption. My my concern with this, given the direction of our political vector, is that a person could be called upon. As being, you know, crazy or something, and if they're a gun owner, uh that could um. I I'm trying to get to the point where I I I have this fear, and I'll be, I'll tell the whole public this for God and everybody. I have this fear that um in the not so distant future, we may be in a situation where. A neighbor can report on another neighbor who they know owns a gun and just claim that they're crazy. And then if this person tries to defend their constitutional right, uh you know, in a in a in a boisterous fashion. They may be considered by a mental health professional to be unstable and then proceed with detaining. Uh you know, and I I don't think that's, this is way out there, but it's it's my point, my line of questioning. Has to do with that potentiality, which I'm sure we're not there yet. But it is a um, it's something that I've heard talked about and it's something that I can see happening. Um and I'm concerned about that, I'm concerned about being able to detain somebody for being emotional. Uh and and maybe compounded by the fact that you know they own a gun. Uh and and that process being used to take somebody away from their home uh for an extended period of time. I mean, five days plus a hearing plus another fourteen. And I just think it's um, that's concerning to me. So I like your program and I see all the benefits, and I will say right here, two thumbs up on saving money and protecting us from um. You know, unnecessary uh jail time and arrest and things like that, those are all good things. I my concern goes along the lines of 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 uh of taking this too far. So I'm just saying this out loud, and obviously, a- and personally, I I don't really mind what people think about me for saying this. But I will just say that um it is a concern, it's it's out there, and I'm hoping that you. Uh being these in these positions of power will help us as a community, you know, uh keep. This type of uh mental health assessment uh bounded. To constitutional realities that we enjoy here in America.
I'll I'll ask Chief Majetic to uh weigh in on on your comment, uh Councilman Smart.
I I appreciate it, thank you, love to hear it.
He's muted. That wasn't me, I wasn't being allowed back in, thanks Stephanie. Uh uh yeah, Mr. Smart, we perfectly understand uh what concerns you raised, but this is really two separate issues. Um the mental health and uh gun rights are totally unrelated to the presentation tonight. Tonight is actually a crisis that police are dispatched to, it's not as simple as a neighbor claiming unjustified assault to get another neighbor in trouble. Um where uh it's really not in the realm of reality, to be quite frank, uh that uh we could, we would go there based on a false complaint. And next thing you know, this guy is being hauled off uh to either uh, you know, crisis or jail or either or. Um that would not happen, as a matter of fact, it'd be less likely to happen in a case like this with mental health professionals on board with the police officer. Um with the co responders accurately determine what actually is going on. So I I I don't think they're related issues, I really don't. Uh as a matter of fact, uh the complaints in the past of that we have been ill equipped alone to handle these situations, which resulted in unnecessary. Uh and not only incarceration, but injuries, only not only to the officers, but to the person in crisis. Um that's what we're concentrating on, the money, the savings and money and things like that is really a side issue and not even a priority. For law enforcement and mental health professionals, that's um unfortunately a necessity to mention. Uh for people that don't want to make the investment into this, uh we add those additional arguments uh to uh support uh this program. But that's not the priority by any means, the priority is uh safety for the people in crisis, safety for the community. And a better approach uh to these emergencies, nothing to do uh with the red flag laws or anything like that. Um uh detentions are rare, uh we uh involuntary detentions are even rare compared to the past. As a matter of fact, I think people have less freedoms um who were in crisis in the past versus today. Um so I I would argue that things are actually getting more improved as far as individual rights than they had in the past. Um and that's uh boots on the ground assessment, and that's what's occurring today, and this is just going to offer those additional services. Um I I think to protect people per per uh person's freedoms rather than taking it away.
Thank you, Chief, much appreciated, and Kate, did you have a quick follow up question?
I want I want to respond, I want to say thank you very much, Chief, and I really appreciate that, those comments. And um I know uh that I I was making statements that are out there, but but you have assuaged those aptly. And I can't, I I'm very glad we got that on the record here on this council meeting uh for everybody to hear. So that's that's a, that's two thumbs up, and like I said, all the rest of the program with the uh assistance to the officers and so forth. It it sounds great, so don't take my uh comments as criticism, please, I was just trying to get that particular issue out in the open and 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 calm.
So we'll give you three th- three thumbs up, those two for the program and one for the chief's explanation, perfect, right on, okay, Kate?
Yes, I was just wondering, I missed the word that was used. Yeah, I believe it was Cameron, you mentioned that we are in need of social, medical and one other type of detox? I was just curious what that third one was?
Yeah, security tox, and that's where you can actually detain them too against their rights. And so uh that has to operate under a subtle level of care, which is very specific, they have to have twenty four seven management. You have to have the ability to do seclusion and restraint, uh and the closest one that we have is uh Spokane to us.
What are the closest ones for the social or the medical, if you happen to know that offhand?
Yakima.
Yakima for both, okay, excellent, thank you very much.
Deanna Cameron, great presentation, a lot of good conversation. Captain and I have had a number of uh updates to the the progress of this with the with the funding. Uh and the only thing that I always worry about with grant funding is what happens when we lose our grant funding, we've dealt that with Metro and in different areas. So uh keep up the good work and keep the statistics to the point of where uh the people who are writing the checks of the grants can can only see a benefit. Uh and keep the funds rolling, because if we if we lose the grant program, uh then we got to figure out how to fund it or we're going to end up doing without it. So keep our fingers crossed, and thank you very much for bringing uh bringing the opportunity to the city of West Richland and keep up the good work. Who knows, one of these days, one of us may need you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right, very good with that, thank you, counsel, we'll go ahead and move on to uh. The consent agenda this evening, and on the consent agenda, we have approved the minutes of the regular meeting, April twentieth, two thousand twenty one. And a motion to amend on call engineering services agreement with J U B. And if there's anyone from the audience who'd like to speak to the consent agenda this evening, if you'd please raise your hand or star nine on your phone, Stephanie could recognize you. Stephanie, do you see anyone this evening?
I do not.
With that, counsel, may I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I'm going to approve the consent agenda.
I second that motion.
That motion is second, all in favor, say aye, please.
Aye.
Aye.
Uh nay, or uh pose like sign, please. Motion carries, thank you, counsel. Uh we're moving on to ordinances, resolutions, motions and public hearings. Uh resolution uh fifteen twenty one is uh. Is adopting an official name for the new police facility community room, so with that, I'll ask Chief Majetic to present his staff report this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, uh ladies and gentlemen, counsel and the audience. Um tonight I'm presenting a resolution in reference to the new police facility, which is currently under construction in the city of West Richland. Uh the facility under construction is really a a success and a culmination of public, city, uh government and individual efforts across the spectrum to make this happen. And tonight, I I really uh would like to mention two standouts in that. A success story we have with our new facility, and that would be Mike and Don Anoski. Um Mike and Don Anoski have been or had been a West Richland residence for over three decades. Uh Mike Anoski served as police chief for thirteen years from nineteen eighty six to nineteen ninety nine. And most of you are also remember that Don Anoski served as city's mayor from twenty ten to twenty thirteen. You know, both Mike and Don Anoski for the entire residency and up to this day in Don's case. They have uh dedicated themselves at a betterment of West Richland and public safety in both of these positions and as residents, long term residents of the city. Um I I I personally remember uh when we began the public education campaign uh in reference to the bond. Uh that we're going to present to public to vote in April two thousand nineteen. Chief Anoski, uh Mike Anoski would uh frequently stop by the station and his health was seriously deteriorating during that time period. Um one day he ran his work his way into the station and uh he basically said, Ben, how can I help? Uh because even back in the nineties, uh as chief, then chief Anoski, he was espousing the need for a larger, uh more uh modern. he was espousing the need for a larger, uh, more, uh, modern, efficient police facility. And, um, he remembered that. And twenty, fast forward twenty-plus years later, he's still on the forefront, wanting to lead that charge. And I, I said, Mike, it'd be very helpful if you'd come to these, uh, community town halls that, halls that we were holding at the time and really speak to what you remember as chief and what you identified even back then as issues that we're facing, um, you know, tenfold today. And he volunteered to do that. Mike participated in all those town hall meetings, um, despite serious medical issues, um, all the way literally up to the day of his death. Pushing not only, uh, for public safety and the betterment of police department and our services that we offer, but for the city of West Richland. Um, unfortunately, he passed away January first, two thousand nineteen, uh, three months prior to the vote, uh, for the police bond. Uh, shortly after Mike's death, um, his wife and former mayor Donna Noski contacted me and, uh, offered her help in, uh, the, uh, push for the new police facility. I, I, I was just overwhelmed, uh, despite the loss of her husband, um, and what she was going through. Uh, she took it upon herself to continue with the cause that Mike Noski had started. And, uh, she played a, a large part in the education campaign that we brought for the public and, uh, which I think ultimately led, it was a big contrib- contributing factor to a successful yes vote uh, for the police facility finance bond. Um, as you may, also may know, with the designs, our community, our, uh, police facility is going to have a large community room. Um, a part of that community room, um, I, uh, thought about Mike's, uh, passing and his efforts up to the day of his death and his continued, um, uh, or Donna's continued efforts on his behalf. And I, I really wanted to, uh, recognize their efforts, not only for the police facility, but their service to our community, both as police chief and, uh, mayor and as longtime residents. So what I'm asking Council tonight is that recognition of Mike and Donna Noski's service to their community and contributions to the city's success. I, I would recommend and ask, uh, Council that the new police facility's community room be named the Noski Community Room upon opening of the facility. Also, what I would ask Council is that I purposely did not invite Donna, excuse me, to the meeting tonight. Um, and I hope just between us and the audience, we can keep this as a secret. Uh, because if we can, I would love to, uh, show her this, uh, the grand opening, which, uh, she'll definitely get an invitation to. So she can see for herself, um, the great honor and respect we have for both her and her husband. Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Chief. Much appreciated. Council, may I have a motion, please?
Mr. Mayor, I'll move to pass resolution number fifteen twenty-one relating to the proposed naming of the new police facility, community room to Noski Community Room.
I'll second that.
A motion and a second, Council. Any questions to the chief? Discussion amongst yourselves. Seeing none? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Motion carries unanimously. So, uh, yeah, keep it under your hat if you could. I'd appreciate it. It'd be a great surprise. A great, uh, great, great time. Thank you, Chief. Uh, so we'll move on to ordinance fifteen twenty-one, uh, repealing that ordinance, uh, adopting fourteen twenty-one, uh, for correction of land use matrix. And with that, I'll ask, uh, Eric to present his staff report this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. So what's before you this evening is a correction. Two weeks ago, the council passed unanimously, uh, the land use matrix that was intended to address, uh, thirteen things that council brought to staff's attention through the title seventeen update. Um, and so we went through that. Um, and afterwards, we found that the matrix that was included in the packet was an old draft, um, that hadn't gone through the vetting and, and QC and everything else. Uh, so what's included in the packet is an updated, clarified, corrected draft um, that has all of the existing, some of the even existing uses weren't included in it. Um, it was, like I said, a very, very rough draft that hadn't gone through all of the QC. So I've gone through that four times now, uh, over the last week, uh, making sure that it is correct and making sure that it is updated. And does include the thirteen items, like I said, that, uh, council had requested of staff to be modified and changed and included in the land use matrix update.
Hey, thank you, Eric. And Councilman Bloom, you, uh, requested this to be, uh, pulled for discussion. Uh, I'll give you the floor, sir.
Okay, um, well, in the, in the previous draft, there was one change that showed up in this draft, which eliminated the drive-throughs in the uh, neighborhood commercial. Um, and those of you that have been on council longer than I have will remember what was the reason for that. And the neighborhood commercial is extremely small in this city. There are only two spots in the city, and that's because they did not want a drive-through restaurant on their corner of, uh, actually, it was Kennedy and bombing range where the issue came up. They didn't want a, a drive-through restaurant there and promises were made when that zoning was committed, that it would be restricted not to have a drive-through. And this has been through, been before council multiple times. And for that reason, I cannot support this change.
Any other discussion, Council? I see none.
Yeah, I'm gonna make a quick comment.
Yes, John, go ahead.
Sorry, I didn't get my hand raised, I think.
That's fine. You're good.
Um, so I have, uh, you know, I'm on the, on the planning, uh, subcommittee and we had a meeting, uh, and discussed this for a little bit. Um, I've got something like thirty-six comments on this, uh, matrix. They're now, now the, down to about twenty, twenty-five concerns. Um, eight of those were changed, uh, with this modification from, from last week to this week. Uh, five of the concerns are, are evidently also held by my fellow council members for the majority of them because they're in the, what we call the parking lot for, for future discussions. And, um, so I, uh, like I, I just want to make the same comment that I did before I voted on this last week, and that is that, um, with my discussion with Eric and the, and the, uh, planning subcommittee, uh, although there are points in this matrix that I sincerely believe should be reconsidered, um, and changed. What I heard from Eric and his representation of our current administration and the way that our city is currently run is that if, if somebody were to come in with a reasonable use that, uh, stretches or doesn't quite fit within this particular matrix, that it can be brought to council, it could be brought to, uh, Eric and his department, it could be brought to council. And those, that consideration can be made, um, because I just still contend that, that it's essentially impossible for us to sit here and conceive of all possible uses for land and, and ways that land is used in, in a free country like we live in today. So, um, you know, with those stipulations, I, and I want to make that on the record. I, I will go ahead and vote for this like I did the last one, although I have less concerns now since there have been these corrections made. But there are things that I still think that are, that are important that we discuss. And so Eric has assured me and the subcommittee has agreed that we will, um, you know, continue to, uh, talk through these, what remaining, oh, twenty, eighteen or twenty-some odd concerns that I have. I'm, I'm happy to accept the consensus, but I just feel that they need to be discussed. And so I want to mention this to council that, that, that that will happen. And, uh, it's not that my satisfaction is paramount, but, but I think that it's important for us to have had good conversation on each of these points and others that maybe some other council members bring up as well. So I guess what I'm saying is that I want to acknowledge that, that it's been, that there's been a commitment that although this is an ordinance, that, that to reasonable degree, it's flexible, uh, when, if somebody were to come to petition for a, a sensible use of property that, that we haven't exactly covered. So I won't, I will definitely not read through all twenty-some odd concerns that remain, but I would, um, welcome those to be published. Eric's gone to a lot of work to, um, to take my comments, which I made in notes on the PDF file and put them into an Excel spreadsheet. And then I would also encourage, um, my fellow council members to, uh, add any concerns they may have, even if they do support this ordinance in full. If you've studied the matrix and you've had questions, let's get those put on the, um, on the Excel sheet so we can discuss them in subcommittee and possibly bring them forward for amendments in the future.
Thank you, John.
Thank you.
You bet. Councilmember Brown?
I just, um, was wondering if Mr. Bloom would go over what his concern was, because I do remember that, that group that came in on Keene and bombing range.
Well, that, but my concern was we created that, or you created that zoning specifically for that area with the restriction that it wouldn't have a drive-through restaurant. That was the whole purpose behind that zoning being committed, com- you know? And that was why it's been chosen as neighborhood commercial with that limitation. And if council does this, we're basically renegeing on a promise made by previous council.
Thank you. Gail, anything else?
No.
Okay, very good. And, uh, Kate, you got your hand in?
Yes, um, it actually looks like there were two different zones that it had been in and then got removed from. It was not only the commercial, it was not only the neighborhood commercial, but it was also commercial limited. And on the zoning map, unless it hasn't been updated, oh, hang on. Dark purple, dark purple. Okay, so the neighborhood.
I brought you a new zoning map. Should be on your wall now, Kate. You should have it like posted already.
Oh, it's, it's on the wall. The problem is, it's on the wall away from where I'm sitting right now. So I've got my computer in front of me that I'm looking at. Uh.
Eric, can you answer that question for?
The dark purple.
Yeah, before, what, what, I'll give you some history on this. So, um, it was not allowed in this, in the commercial limited or in the neighborhood commercial. I wasn't here. I can't claim what happened. I, you know, Richard and everyone, you know, some of you may have been here when, when those promises were made. But, um, when COVID hit, it was brought up in the meetings that we went through for title seventeen that we needed to allow for these restaurants to allow them to have the drive-through windows. And so that was a request. That is item number two on the list. That was something that was included and, and received a majority of council's support. That restaurants needed to be allowed to have, uh, drive-through windows. So, um, restaurants are allowed in the CL, or in the commercial limited as well as in the neighborhood commercial zones. It just didn't allow for that drive-through option. So that's why that was changed. It was because that was the direction that I received from a majority of council, um, almost a year ago.
But I would like to clarify, just for the public, that corruption was a card going in the air, correct? That was no real discussion of each issue. And I, I just, you know, in, in my mind, when the council creates a zone specifically for that purpose, which is what that zone, that one zone, the commercial limited was an expansion of that idea. Um, and so it was somewhat of a similar, uh, commitment to the surrounding neighborhoods. But, uh, yeah, I just have to, I will vote no on this change because that line was deleted.
Okay, Councilman Bloom, what I'm gonna go ahead and I'm gonna ask Eric to dive a little deeper in this, see if he can find any history. I'll also ask Stephanie to go a little bit further into it, see if she can find any documented history. Take a look at any, uh, any deed restrictions that might be placed on any properties. Uh, so we'll, we'll take a little bit deeper dive to see if there was any actual, uh, uh, motion, ordinance, resolution, whatever the case may be. Uh, and then, uh, if, if so, we can, uh, revisit that. It's like John said, that, uh, this is something that, uh, that can be addressed at any given time as we move forward in the future with this of being a working document. So with that, I see, uh, who was up next? Kate, I believe it was?
Right, well, I would, I just wanted to finish. So when we were looking at the two different types that are included in getting rid of this, there is the neighborhood commercial and the commercial limited. The spaces that are where Councilmember Bloom is talking about at bombing range and Keene is the neigh- hmm.
Neighborhood commercial.
Neighborhood commercials. Thank you, yes. And the only other place that neighborhood commercial is, is just north of Rupert Road. But there are other places that have commercial limited, like by the fire station. So, um, maybe if we just had it just for those commercial limited and kept it where, I'm sorry. We allowed drive-throughs at the commercial limited, but then we looked further in at least to the neighborhood commercial to verify that no promises has been made that would be broken. That might be the better way to look at it. So we could at least go forward with the spaces that we don't believe have any issues and then look a little bit deeper to make sure promises weren't made where we're going back on those promises.
That's, that's exactly what I just asked, Kate. So we'll.
Okay, it looked like you were looking at both of them.
Any, any documented, uh, documentation to what Councilman Bloom has to say. Uh, Mr. Smart?
Yeah, so besides getting this off of our checklist of things to do, is there any um, other pressing, uh, motivation to, to get this ordinance done and passed or, or is there, is there, is it would be wiser to have that discussion and look into that issue that Mr. Bloom brought up and maybe even discuss a couple of my higher priorities before we actually pass this? Or, I mean, I'm just curious if there's an onus here.
But if, I'd rather not table it personally, just because there are some errors that were made that need to be corrected. Um, if there is a concern with allowing the drive-through restaurants in the neighborhood commercial, um, my recommendation would be to make a motion to pass, uh, ordinance fifteen twenty-one with the amendment that it re- that it does not allow for drive-through restaurants in the neighborhood commercial zone.
But that would allow, well, that would allow you to do in the future, as John mentioned before, just because it says you can't, doesn't mean you can't ask. You come back to council, you come back to staff, you can have a text amendment, something that that orders. So if that would.
And then I can take that and add it to your list, John, of things to talk about.
That sounds great. I, I like that.
Actually, I believe if you look back in the record, you'll find that there was a request to change the zoning on a couple of those properties because of that restriction.
Well, let's deal with this particular item at hand. And if that's palatable for, uh, you, Councilman Bloom, uh, if you would make that motion with that amendment, that would be wonderful. We can move on.
I move to approve resolution. I don't have the number. Let me.
Ordinance.
Uh, ordinance, uh, fifteen twenty-one, repealing ordinance fourteen twenty-one and adopting the corrected land use matrix modified to continue to restrict restaurants with no drive-throughs in commercial, uh, neighborhood commercial zone.
Okay.
Is that the correct language? Stephanie and Eric?
Um, I would prefer the, the last part there, say, uh, and restrict restaurants with drive-through windows.
Okay, restrict restaurants with drive-through windows from neighborhood commercial.
I'll amend my second.
Okay, a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Motion carry. Thank you, Council, for working through that this evening. Uh, we're gonna move on to unfinished business. And with that, uh, I'm gonna ask Ross to go to provide us with an update on the water situation. It was discussed at the last city council meeting. Mr. Slade, you're up, sir.
Thank you, Mayor. So, Council, I'll give you an update over the last two weeks. Uh, first of all, the number of water quality concerns, uh, whether it was discolored water taste or order concerns, since that information got out, uh, we received uh, since Tuesday, April twentieth, a total of fifteen calls. Um, typically, we're, uh, after that last incident on the nineteenth, we're back to the typical zero to three. Um typically, we're after that last incident on the nineteenth, we're back to the typical zero to three calls. On a given day for one of those issues or. Uh and we also didn't receive any after hour calls or calls on the weekend. So it substantially died down with with some of the changes that we did. In regards to communication. Uh the city had a existing consultant that was assisting us with Facebook posts dealing with COVID situations. And so was able to utilize uh that consultant to assist with getting information out on Facebook. Uh that that was a big help of getting uh answering posts and posting additional information. We don't do, uh there was a number of social media apps out there that uh number of residents uh asked that we get involved with. Uh and Stephanie, can you just elaborate? I don't want to put you on the spot, but wh- why can't we do all the other social medias?
Records retention is the primary s- uh reasoning for that. Roscoe?
Yeah, in in fact, we don't have staff to monitor all that. I mean, there's a ton of apps out there. So primarily, social media that we have here at the city is Facebook and uh our city website. Uh one of the big things that if you go to our city's website, uh you know, over the last. Couple of weeks, uh kind of tracked the questions that we received, the information that was requested. And that has been put on the city's website. So thank you, Stephanie, for helping me with that. So the things that you'll find if you go on our city's website. Under uh Department Public Works, you click on Water and Sewer. Uh you get in there and you can click on our water quality page, and that'll give you information on our water sources. How we treat our drinking water, how we test our drinking water, and how we maintain our drinking water. And then some of the more common things, there's links on those pages. So some of the uh. Really, the a lot of people were unsure of how to report. Or how do you get ahold of somebody? Or even worse, they were shooting in emails to different places that weren't checked on a regular basis. So uh there's now reporting. Uh page for drinking water concerns, and it has a little helpful information that they can do some checks to determine. Uh if they need to call and how they can do that, if they have general questions that they can, there's an email there. So and it talks about the two differences there. Uh with that, uh there's an information page on discolored water and what causes the different different colors you may see. With this incident, we had a lot of uh brownish and uh reddish colors. Um but you may have other see other colors in your thing. So we've included the full range of that. Uh we also put on there taste and odor issues in drinking water. So there's information about that. Um had a lot of questions about filtering and treating a drinking water at the home. Uh for uh for people that may have a variety of issues why they uh want to do uh additional treatment. And so there's information there. A lot of it is uh talking about the standards of different filters. Um and so if you're gonna buy something on Amazon, you know what you're getting to look for those. Uh there are a lot of knockoffs. And uh getting certain certifications will help people buy to make sure it's treating exactly what they they think they they're getting or what they want to treat for. And then the other thing is uh the other uh was maintaining your water heater. Uh a lot of people didn't understand that that requires routine flushing and maintenance with that. Um and so uh we provided some information. So that's up on the city's website. So take a look at that council and residents. Get other things uh that you'd like us to post there, you know, let us know. Uh it's a quick uh reference there. Uh the other thing uh we did in regards to communication is that new utility bill software. Um has the ability to push notifications out to residents and businesses via text or emails. Um and what we're finding is uh just to for us to do texts, you actually have to give us permission. And there's a form, and I think we had a big push for that last year. Um but we've got over fifty-three hundred accounts. We only have five people, five hundred people signed up. Uh to receive texts. Um so what we're gonna do, working with Aaron in our finance department. Uh the utility bill, the utility bill that people will receive. And uh not that this one in May, we couldn't get it to the printer in time, but for the June, there will actually be some information on people, how they can uh. Uh grant us permission and provide their text information and their email. And that allows to use that ne- new technology to push that stuff out to people. So as things happen, we can get that information out to people. And that, you know, they can uh opt in or out if they decide they want that. But um. That would be helpful. So again, there'll be information for people that uh update their utility billing. Uh nothing more frustrating than trying to get ahold of an owner or a property owner and find out the phone number we have on file. You know, is disconnected or no longer in service. So it's helpful. And we won't sell your information. I I think that was the other part of it. We're not gonna go sell it to a third party. It'd be just for city. Um the other thing that we heard and was great uh comment, again, dealing with communication, is limiting the uh point of contact. So we've got great employees here uh from our admin out to our maintenance. And so when somebody calls, they're always trying to provide a great customer service. And so they're trying to provide information, what they know. Unfortunately, uh it may not be complete or uh hundred percent accurate. And so it caused some confusion. And so we've changed that to point of contact. So uh basically, our utilities. Uh manager or water uh operation supervisor at the points of contact. So basically, employees out there flushing a meter or doing something. And the resident has some additional questions or information what's going on, that will be referred to those people so that they get complete information. Um uh again, under communication, uh we talked about how will people know in the future uh when we're doing flushing in their neighborhoods? That this is probably not a good time to fill my pool or my hot tub when we're doing these flushings. Uh and so we've ordered some sandwich boards. We actually uh looked at what some other cities are doing and how they do it. Now you can post it on Facebook or. Uh push this information out, but uh what we heard is put these sandwich boards out a few days in the neighborhoods leading into on the side of the street. That, you know, basically gives you information and a link to our website that people can get more information on what's going on. So we've got those ordered. Uh we'll have those in place before we do the next round of flushing. So people will be informed. And then uh the last thing under the communication. Uh dealt with, one of the things we heard is I called in a complaint, but no one came to my house. I didn't see anybody. And it wasn't that they didn't show up, they just may not have seen them out at the street side flushing their meter or flushing the main or. So uh we're actually hanging door hangers uh out there so that the resident knows that somebody was there, what they did. And more importantly, uh it'll have the employee's name and then a contact information if they need to have fault. Uh so whether you're home or not, that will be handed to you or hung on your door. Um so that they they know that somebody did respond. That was another thing. Water system modifications. So what did we do? Uh you know, to uh mitigate this in the short term? Uh one of the big things was recalibrating our telemetry system. Yeah, so that well seven, nine, and then the new well eleven do not all turn on at the same time. Those set points were very close. And so. If you think about um. It's like a big water hammer coming on where you've got uh wells that'll do over four thousand gallons a minute that all turn off at the same time to fill the reservoir, pushing water in one direction. Reservoir fills, the telemetry system sends a signal out to these wells, and they all shut off at the same time. So that that's been changed. And then we've provided additional training to staff. On set points and and the wise with that. So um additional employees have been trained in that. Um we've hired a consultant uh to update our unidirectional flushing plan. Um it's outdated. It was based on a number of uh. Well, I I guess the majority of the city used to be a bunch of eight-inch mains, but as we've grown, we now have a lot of ten, twelve-inch, sixteen-inch mains. And so, you know, opening up a hydrant uh and flushing for a certain amount of time may not be long enough. Uh so we're working on updating that or not pulling enough the velocity to remove uh mineral deposits. So that's getting updated currently right now. We just had the kickoff meeting with uh our consultant, uh J V. So we use that on-call engineering services contract. Uh to help us update that thing, to expedite that. Um and the other thing that it did in the system is we've had some valvings. And so again, all three of those wells will be turning on. Uh at some point, as we get into the summertime with demands. But to limit the velocity, um so that all three of those wells, the water from all three of those wells, as I said, seven, nine, and eleven. Don't all shoot up Belmont into these primary neighborhoods that were hit and stir up. Uh we have some valving there. So right now, well eleven, new well eleven is going up Belmont. And well seven and nine have been bowled, so they go down. And head further south and come up Paradise. And so that's reduced the velocity in those mains to uh reduce it until we can get this. Uh flushing plan updated and implemented. So that's kind of how we've mitigated in the short term. Um I had a couple uh questions from council members on uh secondary contaminant treatment options. Um and I think we had a few comments that, you know, said we shouldn't shoot for the bare minimum, that the. Department of Health standards are the minimum. Um and that we we should do better. And you know, I apologize, council. It was late. I, you know, can't think of this stuff. But what I did remember was something from twenty years ago. Uh I should have remembered the stuff we did two years ago and the stuff that we did, you know, six years ago. So. Uh kind of start in order. So and these are all secondary contaminant standards. So that's, again, this deals with aesthetics. So it's taste, odor, and smell. So meats drink water quality standards, but in West Richmond. We expect more, and we have invested heavily in our wells. Uh to do that. So the first one is well seven. We did back in two thousand. Uh council authorized over four hundred thousand dollars for an airstripping tower to improve taste and appearance of the well water. Um well, number nine, uh we did a study in February of twenty fifteen. And based on that study, council elected to do a chemical oxidation system in the in the amount of five hundred thousand dollars that was completed in November. Of twenty seventeen. And again, to improve taste and odor from that well water. Well, number ten, on October twenty fifteen, we did a uh treatability study. Um and based on that, uh elected to move forward with an aquifer storage and recovery. Uh project that's four point three million dollars. We're currently in phase two and scheduled for completion in twenty twenty-five. That's to improve not only taste, odor, but also appearance of well ten. And lastly, well eleven, our new well, uh we did a uh. Treatability study in December of twenty nineteen. And based on that, we installed an airstripping tower. And I believe it was just over a million dollars. That was just completed in April of twenty twenty-one. Again, to improve taste and appearance. So council, I apologize for not having that off the top of my head, but we've invested heavily in improving our water. Uh that. With that said, um I do have a call in, and we're do still doing some research to see what other things we can do. On uh additional secondary uh contaminant treatment that at the wellhead, specific to iron and manganese. Uh my initial uh contacts have been. Uh you know, you could, there there are filters and and systems that you can do. Uh but you still need to flush out what you've already got in there. So um but we're gonna continue to to move forward with that. Um I've got a consultant helping me uh to expedite that. Um and as we'll see what their uh proposal comes in and scoping and and cost for that. Um and depending on the amount and how that fits in the budget, it may need to come back for council for a budget amendment. To do that study, but uh initially, what I want them to do is look at what we have invested in these wells. And to see if there's. Other things that we can do cheaply to improve this or at a reduced cost. And it's not just the upfront capital cost that we'd be looking at, but ongoing maintenance cost. And then we'll uh bring that back to utility committee and. Back to the full council for a discussion. So. Uh that's kind of the update. It's been a busy last couple of weeks. Um so with that, all that was uh just the update of where we're at with this issue.
Thank you, Roscoe. Appreciate it. Yeah, it has been uh no pun intended, a fire drill for the last couple of weeks and. Every all the engineers and staff and consultants have put their heads together and and come up with some relatively. Quick, effective solutions. And I applaud everybody for their efforts and and thank you because I. I pushed the button hard. I was out in the field with uh with staff uh and and taking a look at how things were. Uh addressing things with citizens as well. So uh I I think we've uh we've done really very well to to address the concern that. Uh so thank you, Roscoe and your team. Appreciate it. Kate, you have your hand up?
Yes, thank you. Uh first, Roscoe, I want to thank you for calling us personally and talking to us about the issues. It's really important to me, not just because my water was affected, but just because it's water and water is life. So um I was wondering, I know that uh you were just saying, let me get to my notes. Uh that we have the airstripping towers in two places, chemical oxidation in well nine, and then the aquifer storage and recovery in well ten that we're working on. Um and I'm wondering if some of the things that we're looking at, and I probably had asked these questions of you before, so you can just refresh my memory. If we're looking at things like reverse osmosis. Um or if we're looking at uh green sand, which is the oxidation filtration that would specifically treat. The iron and manganese that we're having the issue with. And also, if we're looking at. Uh different towns that have had issues with iron and manganese, like the town of. I don't know if I'm pronouncing this right, Ione? I O N E is how it's spelled. Uh Newport or Northport, because it seems like they have all three had issues with iron and manganese in the past and. Maybe what they've done to help with that can help our situation. And um. Uh. There's a couple other studies that have been done about iron and manganese, like one from Penn State. There was another one from University of Massachusetts and another verse, another from Texas A and M, which. Uh I believe had already been sent to you, but uh it was also forwarded to me. So I can forward that to you as well if you want. Uh I just got that today. I just got that this afternoon from uh MRSC because I had said, hey, what can we do?
Yeah.
So I will afford that to you.
Yeah, thank you, Councilmember Rand. Yeah, please forward that. Um you know, as we look forward to these options, a lot of these were these treatable studies that we did look. Uh uh a- again, it's. You know, we put this on the thing is consideration of treatment for secondary contaminants are typically based on the degree of customer acceptance of the water's aesthetics. And or the customers willing to bear the cost of treatment to improve the water's appearance and taste. So there's a there's a balance there uh to get to that. And when we look at these different options, and what I may do is pull up these uh the most recent studies that we did. Uh and send those out to council just so you have that information. Uh well, nine's probably the the best one. So uh when you look at these treatability studies, there may be uh options there. But a lot of them have uh wastewater, you know, uh washwater that you need to dispose of. And uh many of these wells. Uh nine, eleven, ten. Uh there's no no way to discharge that. There's no sanitary sewer nearby. Not to say that we'd want to run it down to the sewer. That'd be a lot of water, but um that's all factored in. But I'll I'll send those information out so everybody can see it. And then if you have any information, Kate, that'd be great. Just forward it on. And. Like I said, we're gonna go look at the different options. We'll put something together with a scope and take it through the utility committee and then the full council. And again, at the end of the day. Uh well, it'll be a balance of, you know, uh. What the cost is compared to somebody that wants uh or needs to have cleaner water. You know, more than the state drinking water. So we're looking into that. Again, we'll put a consultant onto this to expedite the um deal.
Thank you, Roscoe. Appreciate it. Councilor Smart?
Yeah, hey, Roscoe, um is the study that we are looking at right now going to help us determine? How much of the recent uh discoloration may have come from the well source versus? The uh contaminants in the pipe that have built up over the years? Is there a way for us to determine that? Because, you know, if we're looking at ways to filter that the source. That that, if I'm not mistaken, will not uh fix. You know, water hammer knocking off uh particulates that have built up in the pipes over the over the decades. Um so is there a way to s- to know that? Like, can we take samples at the or were there samples taken at the sources? At the wellheads themselves? Or were the samples taken just at the uh? When we had this water discoloration where the sample just taken at the at the faucets? Um so I'm trying to figure out if the if the if the particulate in the water. That we just recently experienced. By the way, I was one of those household that experienced it along with Kate and many others up here. Um. Uh. Do we know if it came from the well itself or if it came from the pipes between well and our homes?
Yeah, good, good question, John. And to know what source it came from, yeah, that would be a tough one. Uh we would have to look at the, we test at the source. So we do IOCs, VOCs, SoCs. And they have varying uh concentrations of iron and manganese and different things. So we could look at what what we're testing at the source to get a a uh an idea. Um, that's why, you know, people say that their water tastes different. You know, um, it may, they may be getting it from a different source and it may have a higher iron content than the, the other source. But we can look at that. Um, you know, I, I'd have to look into it, John. I, I understand your question. It's, it's a good one. I'd have to talk with a consultant about it. Because the last thing you want to do is put treatment on a well and still have the same problem. What, what they, what they did say though is you, you filter all that stuff out, all the suspended solids in your water, all the minerals out. You still need to flush what you've already got built up in the mains, you know, and it, and they said it could be mineral deposits, uh, sediment, uh, from construction, new construction that wasn't properly flushed out. You know, so they gave me a range of things. We're going to go through that, try to narrow it down when we come to the utility committee. So your, your question's not lost, John. I think that's going to be part of the answer that we're going to be looking for.
So the last thing, you, you mentioned that we put on the website and while, while we've been talking, I did look and I did finally find it. Because I didn't hear where you said it was at first. So can, uh, two things. One, just to repeat that the, this, uh, information on, on colored water and so forth that you cited earlier is under the department's heading and then public works. And then, uh, you go over to let's see, now I'm lost myself. Oh, water and sewer system and then go to water quality.
Yeah, I'm hoping with, you know, Stephanie's working on a new website. We hired a consultant doing a website. And so, uh, I'm hoping that would get easier. That's the one complaint we hear now. Yeah. Is this is an old website and it's difficult to navigate. Um, so I'm dealing with what I've got. Um, and that hopefully we get that updated so it can be streamlined.
Do we have the ability to add a quick link? Though we do have a quick link bar off to the side. Can, do we have control?
Yeah. And that's another complaint we got. They got, they, we hear comments that we got everything's a quick link. And so there's too much over there. So, yeah. I, I would say wait and see what Stephanie comes up with this consultant, the new website. That, that's one of the biggest complaints is trying to make it easier to navigate.
All right, well, you can't win, right? But so just for the public's adaptation, departments, public works. Um, water and sewer system. And then water quality. That's how you get there. And I just looked through it and it looks great. That's a lot of good information. I wish we had that up a little sooner. That's, that's a good, um, resource for our citizens. And I appreciate it too. So thank you.
Can I, sorry, can I just mention to, to, just to streamline it? If you Google West Richland Water Quality, it will take you right to that page. Or at the top of our current website, there's a search bar you can type in water quality. It will also get you right to it. I know it's not the easiest to find, but I'm a searcher, not a finder.
Go for the rescue.
Yeah, just Google it, right? Perfect. Okay, Roscoe, thank you for the update. Uh, much appreciated. Anything else, council? Okay, we'll go ahead and move on to, uh, new business, uh, new, new business A and B are, are a kind of a combination conversation that, uh, the city managers and county administrators have been having. Uh, the, the regional pathway speed regulations kind of segues into the, the, uh, new item B, Lime and Bird. But I'll, I'll just touch a little bit with, uh, the discussion we've been having. Obviously with, with COVID and, and the, the past year, and the, the doors are open and people anxious to get out. We're seeing our parks are crammed, our pathways are jammed. Uh, people are really, really using things. Now we throw into it, uh, e-bikes, e-boards. Uh, the pedestrians and skaters and bicyclists and uh, the different types of uses that are on our pathways. So one of the conversations that's being had and we'll continue to have those conversations and all update councils as we move uh, closer to some type of, uh, of agreement regionally, because all of our pathways do tie together, Richland, Pasco, Kennewick and the counties, especially, you know, Keene Road. Uh, is the, is the big one. So we are going to go ahead and have those conversations and kind of work through what we can do, how we can do it. We don't want to create a burden for enforcement, more of a, of a, uh, honor or system. We don't have a park ranger or a ranger like Richland has runs around a little scoop that runs on the paths and so on and so forth. Maybe we could get the chief's, uh, speed sensor out there for like uses on the school zones and set it up on the straightaway there and see if we can get people's attention, you know? But, uh, we'll continue to have those conversations and I'll share with you where we end up with those items. Uh, the, the second thing, bird and lime, uh, and you see it's, we're talking about a regional scooter pilot program. A couple of years ago, a line came and had a discussion with Visit Tri-Cities, the Chamber and the city managers and the, and the county administrators. We kind of beat them up pretty good because we've all been in the big cities and seen the, seen the wreck of the scooters littering the, the sidewalks and the streets. And, uh, so they, they, they didn't offer a pilot program at that point in time. Uh, they were starting a pilot program up in Spokane, which they have, they, they now have an implemented, uh, uh, scooter program up there. Uh, Yakima was going to pilot a program, uh, the council approved it. And then they came back the next meeting and said, no, thank you. We reconsidered. Now we're not going to do it. Uh, bird and lime wanted to reach out to just one city to begin with, Kennewick. Uh, and that conversation was occurred with the city managers and county administrators of if we're going to see any kind of program, it's going to be a regional program. There's going to be, uh, an awful lot of, of, of regulations and requirements that we would have as a region, uh, for this, for this program. Uh, the, the biggest concern I think we had th- through our discussions is who's going to take care of the scooters? Who's going to, who's going to wr- wrangle them up for the corrals? Who's going to, you know, pick them up? Who's going to charge them? Who's going to do the policing? Who's going to be responsible for the calls? You know, not nine one one. Not, not emergency, not the police departments, but, uh, somebody with Lime and Bird. Uh, so there is just a discussion going on right now and, and councils are being asked from all of the different cities in the county and, uh, minister, the county commissioners. If, uh, they are interested in listening to a, uh, proposal for a pilot program, uh, with, uh, Lion and Bird. So that's what I want to have a conversation, a brief conversation this evening of if council would support a, a pilot program. Uh, and so I will take that back to the, the, the board after we have this, uh, consensus from council. Councilman Blue?
Well, I guess, uh, you know, I've, I've seen the abandoned scooters as well. My, my question to any proposal is show me a successful implementation. And I don't know if they can. I mean, they may be a profitable one, but success.
Understood. That's, that's the question that we ask as well. So that's an answer that they'll have to provide us. Keep in mind, this is just a, you know, a, a pilot program and they might not want to even play the game. If, if we're going to require them to be region light. Uh, they might, that might be too big of a, of a, of a bite for them. And they just may say, thanks, but no thanks too. So that's the reason we're having the discussions. John?
Yeah, I guess my comment would be, uh, well, I've, I've got lots of questions, but I'll reserve them. Uh, I will ask if there's a way that they could be, um, uh, limited to certain locations, like do they have a GPS, uh, uh, boundary line that they can't go beyond. So that in mind, if, if that's a possibility, um, a person might consider allowing them in something like the downtown mixed use zone in our city, um, but perhaps not everywhere else. So I don't know if that's allowable or not, but just kind of maybe that concept of having them not necessarily allowed throughout the entire city, but, uh, just in a certain region.
Okay, just specific, specific zones. Yeah, if, John, if you got a, you know, I, or questions that that I can bring forth to the group, if you'd shoot me an email on them, I'd certainly appreciate it.
I'd be glad to. Thanks.
Okay. I've got that one note down, but I'll look for more. Anyone else? So what I'm looking for is a, is, you know, consensus of listening to a pilot program and an, and a proposal and then report back to you if, if that's what I get. Okay.
Listen.
Oh, yeah, yeah. You gotta, you gotta have the conversation, but we just wanted to make sure that all of the councils, uh, we're, we're going to give the same nod if we've got, you know, if they don't want, if they don't want to do it in Kennewick, why we even take a look at it and, and Pasco and Richland, you know? And then one of the things that is a big concern is our regional pathways. So uh, it just, it just congests things. All right, we'll go ahead and, and move on to that one, uh, with, uh, with the city managers and county administrators. Uh, new business C, obviously last, last council meeting, we had an awful lot of people that wanted to, uh, wanted to speak at council, uh, and, and they, they had to wait to the end of the meeting. And sometimes we do have long meetings and sometimes people can't stay up as long as they want. And, you know, I, I certainly appreciate that. So, uh, you know, looking, looking at the way that, uh, the, the agenda is, is structured, it was, it was adopted by Resolution fifteen twelve. Uh, back in two thousand and ten or eleven, I forget exactly what it is. Uh, and, and I want to have a conversation tonight and ask council, uh, if, if, if you would be, uh, in favor of having two public comment sessions, one at the front of the meeting and one at the latter part of the meeting. The only other thing that I would, I would do is I would, I would re-implement a three minute uh, time limit on, on both ends. So if an individual wanted to have a conversation that was going to take more than three minutes, they could potentially end up with six. And if you can't say what you want to say in six, uh, I'm looking for something that's going to be as consistent and palatable for everybody and even across the board, uh, like given two different opportunities to speak. Uh, so I'll, I'll listen to the conversation that council may have in regards to this, and that's the direction you'd want to go. Uh, then we would have to repeal that fifteen twelve resolution and, uh, amend it to reflect the two public comment sessions with three minute limitation on each end. Kate, you have your hand up?
Thank you. Yeah, I'm, I'm glad that we're discussing this. That is something that I was also hoping that would come up after the meeting that we had last week, or not last week, the last meeting that we had. And I think it's a good idea. There are other councils that have public comment at the beginning. And I'm also glad that we would like to maintain a public comment at the end as well, because normally what happens at those public comments sections that are at the beginning is they normally are people discussing what happened at prior meetings or without having much information about the agenda, basically like folks that are only reading the headlines of a newspaper, but not actually reading the article. So hopefully they'll be able to watch and listen to what's happening during the council meeting and make any further public comments as needed. But I, I do, I like the idea and I, I do think it is important to have limits, especially because of well, folks have to get to bed eventually and a three hour and forty one minute meeting is long.
Okay, thank you, Kate. Much appreciate your comment. Mayor Pro Tim, break?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, I am all in with this idea. Um, last week, not last week's, but the most previous meeting is, as, uh, council member Moran mentioned, uh, went several hours. And I think out of just simple fairness to our citizens who have ideas that they wish to express, suggestions they wish to make, that we should provide that opportunity at the beginning of the meeting. Uh, we have one, two, three, four, five, six people tonight. Don't know if either, any of them want to say anything, but we're already approaching the two hour standpoint. So it'd be great for them to be able to comment at the beginning. I'm also all in with regard to limits. I think that, uh, uh, limiting conversation to about three minutes uh, at the front end and the back end is an appropriate, uh, move. So that's my comment, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you, Mayor Pro Tim Brink. Uh, rolling down the line, hope I'm in the right order. Uh, Mr. Buell?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I hope everybody can hear me. Um, if not, I will call in. My simple thought is, is that typically we do not have a whole ton of public comment unless there is a key issue that the council is dealing with, such as the case at the last meeting. In those cases, we will know, I'm sure in advance of the council meeting starting, I'd be a lot of council input or citizen input. So I am not exactly in favor of this. I like the way that it goes with the opportunity for us to be able to have council comment and citizen comment at the beginning when there is an issue facing us, such as the water. Um, in terms of changing things, I'm not a big fan of it, but I will go with the council's recommendation. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Buell. And, uh, council member Smart?
Uh, yeah, so I, I generally like the idea of getting some, some ability to comment, um, before and after. Um, I'm curious to know, and, and as far as the three, three minute limit, I mean, it's reasonable, uh, especially if there's two comment periods available to a citizen. And I would also state that it's always my recommendation that citizens, um, put at least some summary of their comments in writing and submit those for the public record as well. Um, which might help augment, uh, a longer comment period than they want to make. Um, what I'm going to ask is, is would the, would the comment period at the beginning of the meeting um, include the ability to comment on items that we haven't yet discussed that are on that agenda for that meeting? And, and how would that, how would those comments potentially influence? You know, the, the statements of the council, uh, in, for better or worse. Uh, before the, before really the presentation has been made by our staff and and, and then discussed by council. Um, so my, my, my suggestion is just to consider, I, I, you've just sprung this on, so I have to admit I hadn't put a lot of thought into it. But, um, uh, the question might be if we, if we wanted to restrict the, uh, the comments at the beginning of the meeting to items which aren't on the agenda. Um, or, or not. I, I just, I place that before council to consider. Um, and I honestly don't have an opinion yet. Uh, maybe we can work out one.
I think that's, uh, probably a reasonable, uh, request, uh, that the, and, and that's why we work it with all public comment at this point in time. Well, the only one we have is related items not on the agenda. And even though at the end of the meeting, when we do have our, our, uh, public comment and I make that I make the comment that not on the agenda, they address con, items that are on the agenda anyway. And I'm not going to, I'm not going to cut them off. So I would suggest that we, uh, the, the first to comment session is related to items not on the agenda. So if somebody has something that they want to speak to, it's unrelated, it's an opinion, it's just an idea or whatever it may be, and then they want to bail, then I'm good. And then, uh, we can roll to the end and, and listen to what people have to say in regards to maybe what was on the agenda as well as anything else that's not related. So that would be my suggestion, John.
I like it. That sounds good to me.
Okay, perfect. We'll go that way then. If that's the direction council chooses to move. Councilman Blue?
Uh, just one suggestion, uh, let's put it after the consent agenda. Um, you know, I, I think it's appropriate to at least get the consent agenda done before we get into public comment and usually doesn't. Um, that way we know whether we've gotten any, uh, changes to that, that list, et cetera. Um, because we have found that, you know, in some other boards, uh, we actually schedule it for a particular time rather than necessarily a, a sequence. So that would be another option. Is, uh, you know, say that, that public comment would occur at, you know, but if our, if our council meeting doesn't run short, I mean, we would cut them off. But I think, uh, in the past, uh, you know, where there was a lot of public comment, uh, you know, it gets difficult to get through the, uh, I, I'm sure, uh, uh, Mr. Buell and, and and, uh, um, Gail Brown will, will remember that, uh, there was some awful late city council meetings in the past.
Yeah. Okay, we'll take that in consideration. I will consult with my, uh, with my expert, Stephanie, who's the agenda queen. David?
Oh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I was just looking up, like, you know, to the thought about the initial comment period being things not on the agenda. I had to go back and look. The water issue was not on our agenda for the twentieth. And I don't think it was on for the sixth. I don't know that we knew it was that big of an issue back then. I was just concerned if it was our agenda and we do end up having a three and a half hour meeting again, does that is the idea, I'll bring it as a forward, is to allow people to make comments and not have to stay three and a half hours to make the comment. If we only limit it to non agenda items, we're cut, we're sort of taking that, that away from that, that ability to to make comments and not have to sit around for until nine thirty, ten o'clock. Um, I, I can go either way. I was just Um, I, I can go either way. I was just, like I said, my really concern was the water issue, and like, constantly review said. We get all those comments where there's a big item, we're going to know in advance it's coming. So maybe we have to. Adjust the agenda to allow people to make those comments, like for example, the water issue, you know, we're getting those emails that week. We could, you know, I guess leave off the agenda, allow people to make those comments. I, I don't know, I'm just. Again, trying to make things easier for citizens not to sit around for. Three-and-a-half hours to finally get the, the chance to voice their opinions on, on anything, whether it's an agenda item or not.
Sure, and the, the water issue was certainly. An unexpected and not a normal or a common item that would occur. Uh, how we addressed that on the, on the agenda, we had an internal discussion, we could have, could have done that a little bit different as well. Uh, so it, it, it's, it's, it's a fine balance, but I certainly do understand your, uh. Your question and concern there, David.
Um, we did have, ironically, it was over water issues as well, but we used to have council meetings till one o'clock in the morning. So, um, there's some of what Mr. Buell had mentioned that with these big-ticket items. Um, we know they're coming in, we have a kind of a discussion beforehand, um, but I, I. You might look at time limits and stuff because, um. It can get off track really quick, um. So that might, I, I don't mind either way, but. It, it can get pretty exasperating.
Understanding, that's, that's the reason that I suggest that we have a time limit, so it doesn't continue to drag on. And, uh, yeah, and, and I've been in different meetings where. Somebody will come in and if, if they've got agendas that they want to make sure that the. Commissioners here, it seems like is, occurs more in the counties than it does in the cities. But they'll, uh, they'll use their full six minutes at the front end and the back end and talk about nothing related to business at hand, so. Yeah, we will get that, but, uh, I just want to give the, the citizens an opportunity to be heard without inconveniencing them. And it, that, that's the reason for my suggestion, so Kate, I'll let you speak.
Thank you. One more thing that I thought of when we were talking about time limits is. Um, I, I think that it is a good idea, especially when it comes to items that might have a lot of discussion. Something that I've also seen happen is that there is time limits and also the idea that. Anything said, uh, limit any sort of repeats of the same ideas, so it allows for more. Different things to be said about something, and I know that's kind of a value. That's kind of a values decision on that, but I think that that would also be something we might want to look at. I have heard other. Municipalities have that rule where it's not only a time limit, but also try and keep. Items that are said, uh, limited to things that are different than what has been said previously in order to. Maximize time.
Yeah, and when, when we've had large, uh. Events such as town halls back in the day, before your time, when we'd have them at. At the school and things of that nature, we'd ask if you have, if you have a, a similar comment that. Is, uh, that you've heard, if you would, uh, you know, address that comment that so-and-so concur with this. But then again, too, you've got to give the people the opportunity to be heard, and sometimes they just want to hear from the, for themselves, so. Uh, you know, if they start to ramble, that you, we got our timer and, you know, Stephanie will hit the button. You know, what's that buzzer button? John, thank you, Kate.
Yeah, so, uh, yeah, Mayor, just like you said, I, I always encourage residents to. Even if they have the same opinion, to at least get up and say that they second, uh, the opinion stated by so-and-so. Uh, because otherwise they don't end up on the record. And it's important for everybody's name and, and, and their voice to be heard that way, so. I agree, we should encourage residents not to repeat the exact same thing over, but they should get up and say, I agree with that. Or disagree with that, so, thank you.
So that, uh, seems to be a pretty, pretty strong consensus that, uh, direction we want to go, so we'll, uh, we'll bring that back to, uh. Counsel and, uh, the next meeting on the consent agenda. Okay, perfect. Uh, this is the time we'll move on to, as we were just discussing, citizen public comment, if you'd like to address the. Oh, yeah, we gotta, gotta go to the, I gotta go to the ten or the D. My bad, that was my notes there, I missed that. So with that nine D, uh, former government discussion. Uh, Mayor Pro Tim Brink, you, you brought that up. I wasn't trying to loot it on purpose, so. So, uh, with that, uh. I'm going to go ahead and let you lead the conversation, sir. I mean, it's a bit of a conflict, uh, in, in the position which I sit, so. Uh, with that, uh, I know we've had, we, it's been brought up a couple of times from council members, uh. We've had some internal discussions and, uh, and staff-wise. Uh, it's just exactly what that would look like, uh, you know, budget impacts, things in that nature. How do you do it? What do you do? Uh, it's, it's, it's a pretty, pretty big poll, so I'll, uh, I'll let. Mayor Pro Tim Brink lead that conversation and I'll just tap out, so go ahead, sir.
All right, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I asked this matter be added to the agenda tonight, really just to formulate a plan among us. For future discussions about a possible change to our city's form of government, from mayor council to council manager. I've done some initial research, as have some of you, and there are many important issues and potential challenges. Which are going to have to be very carefully considered. And in addition, we just recently approved the city's budget for the twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two biennium. And the inherent financial ramifications to our city of any proposed change is also good, got to be responsibly addressed by us. So accordingly, what I propose tonight. Is that we ask the mayor to schedule appropriate workshops. In concert with the twenty twenty-three, twenty-four budget preparation cycle. To allow us the time we need to gather the facts to discuss and fully explore the pros and cons of this issue. And since this budget process actually begins later on this year, uh, this time, timetable will give us. The mayor and the city staff adequate opportunity to research. Um, provide estimated transition costs. Uh, any procedural steps we need to take, the legal impacts, and the other data that we need to objectively review. Discuss and ultimately determine if this governance model change is really in the best interest of West Richland. So, of course, I don't want to get into a prolonged debate of this topic. But rather I'd just like to develop a framework which allows for our informed and careful consideration of this issue. So therefore I'll ask my fellow council members for a consensus on my proposal. Which once again is it deliberations regarding a possible change to our city's governance. From mayor council to council manager. Be included as part of the twenty-three, twenty-four budget development and approval process. So I guess at this point I'll just ask each of you, uh, if you care to comment, what your comments on my proposal are.
Yeah, I don't know if you can see hands up or not, Fred.
I, I can, Mr. Mayor, so.
Go ahead.
I see Rich's hands up. Rich, I'll start with you.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tim Brink, and again, if my audio cuts out, I will call in. Uh, I, I think that this is certainly an issue that is interesting, um, but I also. Agree with you, uh, Mayor Pro Tim Brink, that I am not sold on the timing of it as in happening immediately. Uh, the reason why I say that dates back to my job on the city council when I was on the subcommittee to consider. A name change for West Richland. Seemed like an interesting idea at the time, spent a lot of time looking into it. And found out as we studied the issue, the costs that were involved, almost a million dollars to change our name from West Richland to anything else. Things that we didn't even think about when we had talked about it initially. And so I think this is an interesting topic. I am in favor of certainly discussing it further. I am. Uh, not in favor of trying to, uh, do something in the short term, especially with the budget that we have already. Uh, passed that is just four months in, so with that, I will let other council members speak. Thank you, Mayor Pro Tim Brink.
Thank you, Mr. Buell. Uh, council member Moran.
Thank you very much, Mayor Pro Tim Brink. Uh, I am very glad that this is a topic that's on the table. This is something that I was going to be bringing up tonight again. Uh, as I had previously, if it wasn't on the topics of discussion, so. I think that it is really important to talk about the form of government. Currently, what we have is, we have the mayor and we have the council. Where we have seven council members that are, uh, six hundred dollars a month. Is a salary and the mayor is six thousand dollars a month, and then we have a city clerk. Uh, there is of course a hybrid version in between what we are and the manager council form of government, and that would be with. The city administrator and a mayor as well as the seven council members. I honestly think that it is not cost-effective. And I think that it is, it would be detrimental to our citizens if we were just to go to a city administrator. Because I think that that would be costing more than if we were to go with just having. Only seven council members and then a city manager, because the city administrator pay is rather high. And still the mayor's salary would be two thousand five hundred, I believe, per month, uh, according to the last. Salary committee meeting. So I think that this is important. I think it's also important, not that. I, I don't believe that Mayor Gary has done anything wrong, but I do think with the way that we are growing right now, we are growing so quickly. It is important to have somebody with a highly formalized, um, level of education. As well as experience in several different departments. Within several different types of cities, which is what we would be looking for if we were to get a city manager, so I think that it is. It, it's not only important, but I think it's necessary for us to look at this and hopefully change to manager council form of government. Because I think in the end it costs us more to not go to that than it does to. To go to a manager council form of government. And the biggest thing would be that this wouldn't be us deciding whether or not we would go to it. This is the council, because it's an RCW. It would be the council. Voting whether or not to put this on a ballot to have the voters of West Richland decide. With information that hopefully we would be able to provide to them and they would be able to get elsewhere. About the difference form of, the different forms of government, because the voters in the end are going to decide whether it would become. A manager council form of government or if it would stay with a council mayor form of government. So, thank you.
All right, uh, thank you very much, council member Moran. Yes, uh, this is something that the voters would ultimately decide. But I think, uh, it is our job, uh, if we ever made a recommendation to change the city's form of government. That we provide the voters with all the information that they need, because the costs, uh, to do so are considerable. So, um, thank you. Um, council member Feto.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tim Brink, um. Yeah, I'm, I'm sort of in agreement with, uh, with where I got to my review on about it. I think it's. It's great to start having that conversation, trying to do something now in the middle of our budget cycle. Um, doesn't seem like the, the best use of time and. I don't think we, we have a budget for, you know, a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollar salary. Um, I, I will say though, size of our city should not be the issue driving this. Um, I'll, I'll point out that Seattle. Uh, population of seven hundred and sixty thousand plus is mayor council for. Um, so just because we're growing doesn't mean that. What we have now doesn't fit for where we're going. Um, so size of city shouldn't be, now, not saying we shouldn't have that conversation, but. Um, just because we're growing doesn't mean that our current, uh, government doesn't work anymore. Um, I did a quick search just as we were talking about it, and roughly sixty percent of the cities in the state of Washington are mayor council for. Um, you know, some much smaller than us, and as you see with Seattle, so much bigger than us, so. Size alone shouldn't dictate the move, but, um, I, I agree, looking when we start planning the next budget, I think that's, that definitely a time to. To have a workshop and, and start having some conversations. Thank you.
Thank you, council member Feto. Yes, in addition to Seattle, um, Spokane also has the mayor council form of government, uh. Federal way as well. Um, so I, I think it's up to us to try to figure out. Uh, do we need to make a change or are we still good the way we are? Uh, Mr. Bloom, council member Bloom?
Well, also I can, uh, reflect on my son's city is a mayor council. And they just recently had a adversarial mayor change. And, um. It, it can be for the better. Um, I've, so I guess I'm, I'm willing to for the discussion, but I'm not convinced that. Going with city administrators that our smaller cities wouldn't be a. Seen as a stepping stone and we'd be seeing city administrators or city managers walking through and. Stepping up to bigger and better jobs. Um, so, uh, it's a mixed bag. Uh, the question really comes down to is whether we can. Within the community, I mean, we all serve for this big six hundred dollars a month. And some of us, uh, spend a hell of a lot of time to make that six hundred dollars. Um, and, uh, the same thing, you know, the mayor's making his big bucks, but that's still not. What the job would entail. You have to have some city. Uh, you know, you're doing a civil service in all these positions and, and we are. We're paid, but we're basically paid volunteers. And, you know, if the city isn't able to muster people willing to invest the time and effort, then. I guess we have to buy somebody to do it for us, but. Uh, my personal opinion is if people step up to be mayor. Um, uh, more power to them. So I appreciate what Mayor Gary has been doing and, uh, Mayor Nasky as well. Um, and so the, the question goes down to is if they do a good job, if we get good candidates, then. We have it, but, you know, it, it may not last forever, but. It's a question of striving for, you know, in, in, enlightening people that there is a benefit of public service.
Thank you, council member Bloom. Um, council member Moran, I see you still have your hand up, but before I get back to you, uh, let me talk with council member Smart, please.
Okay, thank you, uh. Mayor Pro Tim Brink, um, I think you stated the proposition very well. Um, it, you brought up most of the points that I would, um, want to consider in a workshop and, uh, further consideration and. Also the scheduling seemed appropriate. Um. I also, uh, agree, I, 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 I don't really. I think our job here is to come up with the best solution for our residents, right? And I don't think we have a bad solution now. As far as our form of government goes, but, but I'm always open to analyzing to see how we can maybe gain efficiencies or. Or, or other, uh, you know, maybe. Reduce inefficiencies when it might not even though exist. Um, so I'm, I'm open for the conversation and, um, but I really don't have a predisposed. Um, feeling one way or the other. I agree with, you know, both the, uh. Comments of, uh, uh, council member Feto or Bloom and, um, and, and, uh. You'll on, of the general sentiments there. I will say that, um. I, I think that there might be other options, uh, to consider. Right now, we. We rely heavily on our expertise of our department heads, as well as the mayor's experience, certainly. Um, but department heads are, are key in our so, so city right now, right? I mean, you can tell that just by the reports we get and. How the tasking works out and it all seems to be running fairly smoothly. Um. One thing I would just cut, uh, mention that we might add to our list of things to consider in our analysis. Um, is, is, and it's a question in my mind, I don't know that this exists, but. You know, if, instead of paying for a city administrator full-time. Or, uh, having a, a city manager who's also quite expensive, I'll mind this all. Um, are, are there opportunities for us to invest? In periodic reviews of our operation by some outside consultant. Uh, who might come in and spend, you know, maybe it'll cost us a hundred thousand bucks. But somebody to come in and spend a month, sort of looking over the departments and seeing how things operate and. Making a report and, and advising us as to whether or not there's room for improvement. Um, that may be a, an, an economical way to get the same efficiencies that we might otherwise get with a. A, a very expensive, um, FTE, uh, full-time equivalent cost of a city manager. Or a, um, city administrator. So that's really all I have to contribute. I, I, I support your proposal and I support the timing, um, and. So that's really all I have to contribute. I, I support your proposal and I support the timing, um, and I look forward to the conversation.
All right. Thank you, Councilmember Smart. Councilmember Moran, you have your hand up again.
Thank you. Yes, I did want to mention one more thing is that when we're looking at the size, I know that there are larger cities that do have the council manager forms of government. And I think it's important to look at the fact that it's not just that once you get past a certain point, it's good to go to, well, it's recommended normally to go to, uh, manager council form of government. But it's, it's that cherry spot in the middle of between being a small city and a big city that's really important to look at becoming a manager council form of government. And I know that there are a lot of cities that are not manager council forms of government, but that's also because we have a lot of small cities in the state of Washington. But if you look at the size of the cities, you'll look at, for instance, one that is, uh, well, Councilmember Fettow, you'll know, uh, this, this phrase, uh, one of our comps is Centralia, Washington. Centralia, Washington, uh, Centralia City. They have seventeen thousand seven hundred forty-five people estimated from July two thousand nineteen. They actually changed over to a council manager form of government in nineteen eighty-six. MRSC.org, uh, they have a lot of information about the different forms of government. And if we just look at these, even Shelton City, who in two thousand seventeen changed over to, they changed from a commissioned form of government to a council manager form of government. They have ten thousand six hundred and fifty-five people. So we really are right at that size where we're growing. We are getting exponential number of houses that are coming into our city. Now is the time, and I know that we're talking about the timeline when it comes to budget, but we always are looking at budgets if we're being honest with ourselves. I know that we have specific timeframes when we're looking at them more, but we're always looking at budgets. And I think it's important to look at the big picture of the fact that yes, a city manager is going to cost more, but you would also have only seven council members and you wouldn't have a manager. So I think that those are important things that we should look at, look at the different forms of government and the size that they're in. Because the smaller and the larger ones are going to be the ones that have the city council mayor forms of government. But the middle range ones that are really growing, those are the ones that are, you're going to see going more to the manager council form of government. I think even AWC probably has something to say about that. But the other thing is that with the amount of time it takes to discuss it, then get on the ballot, then discuss when it'll go on the ballot. Better to start talking about it now than it is to wait until it's a better time to talk about it. Cause it's never going to be a better time to talk about changing anything. It, it costs money no matter what to change things.
I agree with you, Councilmember Moran. It will cost money, but, um, my point tonight is not necessarily to get into a debate about what form of government best serves the city. That will take us many, many hours. But I appreciate your comments. Um, thank you. Uh, Councilmember Brown.
Um, I, I agree that we need to have this conversation, um, and, and I kind of agree with Kate. I don't want to push it out too far. I think we need to start doing it now. Things are changing, not just with the city and exponentially growing, but the legislature is just coming down with huge unfunded. I mean, it's the whole plane is just going in. And it might need that we will save money actually, um, probably on attorney fees and everything else. If we have somebody in there that knows and is keeping on top of everything and some consistency. We get somebody in there that's just, and, and I'm not saying the voters aren't smart enough to vote for a good candidate. But sometimes they're ill-informed or not informed. And, and it could be pretty devastating to get somebody in here for four years or eight years or twelve years that, and I can think of some instances that it costs us a lot of money. So I, I think we need to have the conversation and, and decide. Um, I don't know what timeframe that needs to be in.
Okay. Thank you, Councilmember Brown. As I listen to everyone's conversation though, I, I do see the consensus of the council members uh, preferring to wait until the next budget cycle. And while the needs of the city are always, uh, variable, they will always change over time. I really believe that we need to spend the time, the effort and the research needed to make sure we're doing the right thing. Uh, I'll just close with one other comment because, uh, there was some information that I was able to gather from, uh, Dave Zabel, who's the city manager of Pasco. And, uh, when this topic was discussed with him, he made the comment, uh, he is a city manager. Rushing into it now, speaking of West Richland, uh, seems rash. Such a change is serious and difficult to reverse. The reasons for such a change need to be objective, need to be well reasoned and supportive of the change. And the transition needs to be very well planned. I think we need to take the time to make sure we do it right. And unless I have heard incorrectly, I think our general, our consensus is, uh, to pursue this in earnest as part of the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four budget. Uh, to do so sooner than that, I think will cause a great deal of additional work on our city staff when they're trying to implement the current budget, trying to, uh, do our roads, uh, road improvements, our housing development and so forth. And I think we need to have the proper planning to do this. So, uh, that's how I view the consensus unless there is a disagreement with me other than what Councilmember Moran and Councilmember Brown said. All right, Mr. Mayor. Um, that's it for this topic.
Hey, so, uh, Mayor Proton, Mayor Proton Brink, then I'll, uh, I'll take your, your recommendation and consensus that you, uh, have formed from the council and have the discussion internally with staff. Uh, and to start having that conversation through council retreats, workshops, things of those natures. As we move into the, the following budget, the next budget cycle, while also asking staff to prepare, uh, all the types of information that may be beneficial for, for council uh, to consider as they move through that discussion process. If that's what you would like me to do, sir, I will continue to move in that direction. Is that the?
Thank you. I appreciate that because if we're going to do this, I definitely want to make sure we do it right.
Okay. Thanks, sir. Uh, we'll move on to citizen public comment. And this is the time that we'll open the meeting up to, uh, comment to the citizens. If you'd like to address council, you go ahead and raise your hand or if you're by phone, star nine, uh, be recognized by the clerk and address council. Stephanie, do you see anyone this evening?
I, I do see, uh, Mr. Baker.
We'll recognize Mr. Baker to address council.
Good evening. Um, apologize for the lack of video. I'm in the dark here at the moment. Um, but, uh, I'll just briefly speak in favor of the change to the public comment. And not to be too meta about it, uh, but, uh, I do like the change to the public comment. And, um, I do also like the, um, consideration of the change to the, uh, uh, city manager form of government. Uh, I do think that we should be looking into that. I don't know that that's necessarily where we want to go, but I do think that we should move, uh, look into it. So that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Stephanie, do you see anyone else?
I do not.
And do you have any comments that were requested to be read into the record this evening, Stephanie?
I do not.
Okay. Very good. Thank you. And we'll move on to, uh, staff council announcements, uh, reports and comments. If there are any staff members that have anything that they need to add to this meeting, uh, go ahead and raise your hand. And I will recognize you. And Roscoe.
Thanks, Mayor. I'm going to be riding home my bike in the dark here. I have to put my light back on it. So it's, it's not too often that, uh, we have an employee win a, uh, a considerable award. Just want to announce, so this is the Department of Health, uh, Drinking Water Week. Uh, so it's a big thing. They do a lot of, uh, uh, advertising. And they also have, uh, nominations for different, uh, awards. And, uh, a few of us here at the city, uh, submitted, uh, for a lifetime achievement award for Fred Pardini. Our, uh, water supervisor that had retired after thirty years of service with the city of West Richland. And pretty excited to, to let you all know that he was selected as for the lifetime achievement award from the, uh, Washington State Department of Health Drinking Water Office. So, uh, we'll have to get in touch with Fred. It's a pretty cool little award he, he gets. Um, I'll actually email out the nomination that was sent in, uh, for him, but that was kudos to Fred Pardini. And it's kind of neat that to have somebody that worked, I mean, you don't see too many people working at an agency or one place for thirty years and putting that kind of dedication in. So it was kind of, kind of neat to see him. Uh, Fred retired here back in March. So kudos to him. And then the lastly, uh, council, uh, the purchase and sale agreements with seven HA, uh, family LLC, which is commonly known as the Alexanders, uh, will, is set to close tomorrow on that, uh, land swap. So that'll be completed, uh, tomorrow and all the recording. So that was it for tonight.
Thank you, Roscoe. Anyone else, staff? Okay, I see no one. So we'll move on to council reports, comments and announcements. If you have something you'd like to address. Councilmember Bloom. Um, my first comment was the bogus email I got from you this morning or this. I don't know how many people got that. That was, yeah, that, that was, that was, that was the, the other bad mayor that you don't want to have. Yeah, well, it was Councilman Nineteen. And, and then the, the training email that I also got at the same time saying I have training coming up that, well, come on, I'm going to click this link. I'm, I'm, I'm a little nervous. So, uh, I'd appreciate some heads up of that. But, uh, I attended the mosquito control board meeting and, um, found that our county assessor had provided mosquito control an erroneous run of properties. And so mosquito control is short about ten percent of their budget this year. Um, of which that ten percent was, was assessed to people outside the district. And now the county's treasurer's got to pay them back for those that paid, which obviously for the county to cut a five dollar check in some cases probably costs them five bucks. So the county is in, uh, a significant risk. A number of people were not assessed and so they're going to get a bad newsletter in the mail asking for seventeen bucks. Uh, and heads up, none of the city properties were assessed. So you're going to see a, a bill coming from mosquito control or from the treasurer's office asking for the mosquito control assessment for city properties. Uh, but that brought to mind, uh, was our assessment correct? We might want to go back and look at really what properties were assessed, uh, for the city of West Richland. Because, um, it appears that, uh, the assessors roles were somehow, uh, run amok, so to speak. Uh, very discouraging. Um, of course, uh, the assessor's dad showed up, our county treasurer and defended him saying we should, the mosquito control board should control all of our property listings. And I said, that's not realistic. Uh, the cities don't, um, necessarily watch the, you know, the property rolls. I think that's the assessor's office. So, um, be aware that, uh, things ran amok this past year. This first time it's happened to the, to mosquito control, but it is a significant, significant issue for them.
Mr. Bloom, is it just for the mosquito control or was other things not assessed?
Well, all I know is mosquito control.
I mean, I mean, there's all kinds of different little things.
Right. With thirty-eight hundred people were, uh, thirty-eight hundred properties were assessed that shouldn't have been. And, uh, fifty-four hundred properties weren't assessed that should have been. And, uh, you know, when you looked at, to do a quality check of it, is it about the right number of properties? And, you know, it's, it's in the upper seventy thousand, but we don't do a one-to-one verification. I mean, that's not.
Are they going to audit it then? I mean, are, are they going to audit themselves since they know this is happening?
I don't know what's going on. I might just. To the treasurer. Uh, I wasn't aware at the time that the assessor was his son. So, uh, politics are running deep out there.
Yeah, it seems like that should be an automatic, just go audit all that stuff.
So, um, I don't know. We, we might want in some way look at our assessment roles, uh, and, you know, do some spot checks to see if something is wrong there. But it is concerning to me that, uh, you know, things changed significantly. It will have, uh, we'll have that discussion, staff meeting tomorrow. Richard, thank you for bringing that forward. And, and it's not the first time that they've surprised us. I remember getting, uh, assessment bill a couple of years ago that shocked heck out of me. And I think John had same one. I was going to go back and look at mine to see if my CID assessment came in because I can see them doing the same thing to the, to the. Especially, you know, we might want to focus on our irrigation district assessments. You know, that might be a problem area. And, uh.
And this is just as of April, correct?
What?
Is this as of the new tax period of April?
This year. And they, they only found it because people started complaining, saying I shouldn't have been paying this five bucks. I'm not in the district. So it was complaints that drove this.
Well, a lot of that goes to the bank and they don't even see it.
Right. But, yeah, that, that becomes a, a bit of a, a concern. So I just bring that up that, uh, we should look at especially for our special assessments like, uh, irrigation. And I'm not quite sure if there's anything else that we have special, but, um, you know, new properties that you might do a spot check of new properties or subdivisions, things like that to make sure they showed up. Okay. We'll check her out. Thanks, Richard. Appreciate it. Councilman Fettow?
Yeah, just real quick. Uh, I know we're getting late again. Uh, just wanted to let counsel know that, uh, the police subcommittee had the opportunity to take a quick tour of the new police facility. And it's crazy how fast that things come out of the ground, but there's a structure up and, uh, uh, if you get up to go drive by there, you can't get out there without your hard hat, but, um, it's coming along. It looks great.
Yeah. Thanks, Madam. Councilmember Moran.
Thank you. Yes, real quickly, I was just wondering, um, I would just like to say that I have recently read about things like, um, creating something like a neighborhood plan, which I think that we could maybe look into or should look into uh, what a neighborhood plan is and implementing it maybe on one small area to check and see if it would work. I can talk to you more about it. I'm sure that, uh, Eric probably knows a little bit about them. And I know that Jacob Gonzalez with the city of Pasco had been, uh, working to leverage some state funding from HB nineteen twenty-three. And I don't know if we are in conversation with other city staff, but I think that that might be useful to know how they were able to leverage that and to talk a little bit about the burden of housing cost that they were able to use that for, which kind of would also lead into looking at, um, looking at perhaps an economics consulting firm immediately, I think, hiring a consultant, that's a lot of money. But I know that the Port of Kennewick had recently used that process of using an economic consultant and they had a lot of benefits from that. There's a lot to say about helping to grow the tax base without uh, outgrowing the service area, which that economic consulting is really important for. And lastly, I was wondering, when we are talking about moving the discussion to the next budget cycle, what is that, uh, timeframe looking like? Does that mean that it wouldn't be until twenty twenty-three that we would start discussing the prior or it would be twenty twenty-two? two thousand twenty-three that we would start discussing the prior or it would be two thousand twenty-two?
We'll have that discussion or the senior staff meeting and, and report back unless Erin, you have, well, she's, she's our budget guru gal. So she can, she can probably touch on that as well if she has the time to.
Or like if Stephanie allows me to speak. So no, the next budget cycle, the latest we start developing it is usually February of two thousand twenty-two. So about eight months away is when we start really getting into the nitty gritty.
So then that was the timeframe we were looking at, starting to discuss the different types of forms of government? Is that what we decided?
If, if we're going, from what I understood from Mr. Brink, if we're going along with kind of within the budget development for twenty-three, twenty-four, yes, we start that and that is done next year. That's going to be finance's big project for the year.
Yeah, and that's my recommendation, Councilmember Moran.
Okay, I wasn't sure with the timeframe since it was for the two thousand twenty-three budget when that might start, so thank you.
Yeah, and I'll just, just remind council, you know, as we have our conversations and we have all these different ideas that come up. We got to remind everybody that we have a budget. We have a work plan from all of our senior staff individuals. And four months into the budget, five months into the budget now, I've heard a number of requests of, of changes and things the, the council, our council members want to have done. Staff has, like I said, their budget, our budget's planned, our work plans planned. And we don't have the staff to go out and chase every single thing. And when we have a budget cycle, this is when we have our retreats. We look at our SFAs, we have the discussions amongst council members of what they want to see. And that's how we develop budget based off of strategic focus areas, the goals and objectives. So I encourage you to keep in check of what reality is. Look for the future and have these discussions when a budget cycle is, is appropriate. The staff has got chores, they've, they've got their work plans, they got their plates full and we don't have time for special projects unless you want to direct us to what's not going to get done. What are we going to take out of the budget that we have budgeted to take on these special projects? So while I, I, I encourage thought processes and great ideas, there's time and place for all of the above, so. Be mindful of staff's time in the budget, which you just adopted five months ago. Councilman Bloom, sir?
I wanted to piggyback on what, yeah, I was talking about cycle wise. Elections are coming up, guys. We get to decide whether we're going to put through, put forth another four years of this. And whether we're chosen to continue. So I would suggest that we do the, we have a plan of meeting in December where, while we have our existing council members as well as, you know, winners or losers or not carrying on people, which you could bring forward into the as a, as an item on a retreat that we would typically have in January the following year. So I think from a timeframe, if we're going to discuss this, we should initially discuss it in December. If that would be appropriate. Mr. Brink, I, I bring that forward as an idea.
Yeah, Councilmember Bloom, thank you, but I really appreciate the mayor's comments about we, we passed the budget five months ago.
Well, no, it was being preparation for whether we explored further for the next budget cycle in, in February.
Oh, yes, sir. I, I, I agree with that, Mr. Bloom. Thank you. The, the last comment I'll make though, I, I just want to reiterate what Mayor Gary said. We spend a lot of time on the budget. We as council and of course city staff did a tremendous amount of work on that as well. Granted, emergencies come up and emergencies have to be addressed and we have to make decisions to address emergencies such as the city water. This change of government is not an emergency and we need to plan for it very carefully because the ramifications are far reaching. So putting it as part of our discussion for the next budget cycle, I think is the most prudent path for us to take. And I'll, I'll end my comments at that, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Councilmember Brown?
I just want to remind council that since these four months have passed, we've probably done one point five million dollars worth of budget changes. So I, we do try to do these budgets, but there's always budget changes.
Yep, and that's standard, standard practice of, of the business is there is budgets amendments and, and so I, I, I do recognize that. And if you, if you don't have the budget amendments, you, you're not going to go anywhere, so. And anything that we've done has been beneficial, benefit the city. And that's the, that's the, obviously the consensus that the council has had because they've approved these budget amendments and brought forth to them. Anyone else this evening? Okay. Seeing no one and it's getting late, everybody pretty much knows where we're at with COVID since the governor couldn't take King County and push them back to phase two, we all get a pause for a couple more weeks to see just exactly what next he comes up with for a plan. So hold on, it's going to be a rocky ride in next, next few weeks and I'll give you updates as soon as I have anything that comes forward, just as I sent you an email today. With that, I will adjourn the meeting at eight forty-three. Thank you, council and citizens. Much appreciated. Have a great evening. Be safe out there.
Good night.